It is Tuesday, November seventeenth, 5:30 PM. And just to read the notice, supplemental notice of reading meeting by video conference in accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued on March sixteenth, 2020, as extended by the Office of the Governor on June twelfth, 2020. The City Council for the City of Duncanville, Texas will conduct a city council regular meeting by video conference at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, November seventeenth, 2020, in order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, in an effort to slow the spread of the Corona COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is conducted by video conference. There will be no public access to a physical location. The speaker insists comments you must adhere with the city secretary 4:00 PM on Tuesday, November email the city secretary and the title in email public comment November seventeenth. You will need to register below and attend the meeting. During the citizen comments period of the agenda, the city secretary will call your name and allow access to your camera and microphone for you to provide your comments. Feel free to email your comment to the city secretary for the mayor to read and to the record for any unexpected technological issues that may arise. A video recording of the meeting will be made available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act on written request. And again, we've called this meeting to order at, I'll call it 5:32. Just as a note, our mayor is not feeling very well today, therefore I'm, will be conducting the meeting. He gives his regrets to all the council members and also to Commissioner Price and those others that are involved in the meeting. Explanation of business is the audience is in listen-only mode. However, the citizens who registered to speak with the city secretary by the 4:00 PM deadline will be allowed to speak. Their microphones will be turned on by the city secretary. Each council member must use the raise their hand option in Zoom or physically raise your hand. Kristen will be helping me with that as well. Votes will be by roll calls. The city secretary calls each person's name. State if you're for or against the item being voted on. And it is now time to send it over to our city interim city manager, Paul Fredrickson, to discuss the items.
Mayor Pro Tim, Mac Burnett, members of the city council. On your consent agenda for this evening, we have a number of items. First item is item A, which is the unapproved minutes for your meeting for August eighth, September first and September fifteenth. Item B is the consideration of a resolution canvassing declaring results of the November third general election and calling for a runoff election for Tuesday, December eighth, 2020. Item C is the consideration of resolution. Traffic operations, equipment supplies from paradigm traffic systems using the vibe board cooperative purchasing agreement in the amount of ninety thousand seven sixty-nine. This item, and I'll, and I'll talk about this item in the next item in comparison. The paradigm item, basically, we're using two different vendors to purchase equipment for our traffic systems, traffic signals, boxes, wiring and everything that's connected with that. The paradigm, the best way to describe both this item and then item D, which is the resolution authorized purchase of traffic operations equipment consolidated with HEAC in the amount of ninety-six thousand is the paradigm item is basically buying internal equipment that goes inside traffic boxes that you see in each of our signaled intersections. It buys us traffic, basically electronics equipment, any of the various equipment that helps to maintain those boxes. This item contemplates the repair or the maintenance of three of those boxes as part of our overall system. And then the consolidated item is the purchase of, again, maintenance equipment. But this is really the external parts. And so we're able to break these up into two different bit products to be able to get the best price or also the equipment that we need. The consolidate consolidated item gets equipment that you see such as signal heads, the signs that you may, these signs that you see on the intersections, again, wiring, and then any other kind of equipment that goes on the external part of those systems. This contemplates working on about four intersections. Also includes that I might add the purchase of fourteen glass shields that will go over the intersections and contain our new logo. So those are the two various differences for those two, two items. Item E is consider resolution of a purchase agreement with Sam Pax Ford. This is to purchase a number of vehicles as part of our vehicle replacement system of Ford F-150 half cab or Taurus and a Ford F-50 for our vehicle replacement program. Item F is a maintenance or monument agreement with the state of Texas, State of Texas Tech Stop. These are for our two monument signs, one at Wintergreen and one at Camp Wisdom Intersections. These are, this is an agreement that we have to have the tech stop to be able to install a monument sign inside their right of way and provides for the maintenance of that, that sign. And then item G is consider resolution to for the secure plan with our night security systems. Night security is the, is our provider for our cameras, our security cameras, city hall and all of our other facilities and critical infrastructure. We're beginning to install those at each of our critical infrastructure plants such as water towers, pump stations and those kinds of things, parks in each of our facilities for both the security cameras and also for our controlled access points within those. And so this plays for the year's maintenance for those. It helps us. They monitor those systems and if there's any repairs needed, they take care of those as part of this maintenance agreement. And then finally, item H is just a investment policy. As you'll note in the item, there are very minor changes to that policy. This is just something that we do yearly that we ask council to approve. And again, this is recommended changes that makes us compliant with the public investment, Public Funds Investment Act and is also recommended by our consultant with Valley View. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, these are the consent items that I've read. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson, for that. We will now will now move into our briefing session. Do we have Commissioner Price with us?
Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here and thank you, Mr. Manager, for the invitation. Needless to say, we moved into the seventh call with regards to all of our projects. If you have before you District Three map, you would, you will know that, and I think we've kind of gone over this before, but nine hundred fifty-five square miles, sixty percent of it lies in District Three. And of course, Duncanville is, it's right in the upper southwest corner of, northwest corner of District Three. Eleven square miles. When we get into the strategic plan, we just basically talk about the vision that give direction to Dallas County in its future. When we deal with District Three road and bridge, we're just basically talking about the maintenance of the existing facility. You know, this, these whole life cycles have varied based on the conditions and the repair of the roads. The typical repair, less than a year, it can vary due to the agreements of the scope. Typically, the city pays for materials, the county provides the labor and equipment. And finally, I guess we get that fifty, fifty. You can turn the I'm on about the third page, but anyway. Recently completed and ongoing projects, Wintergreen Road rehabilitation from Cockrell Hill to the eastern city limits, we've gotten past that. And the PSA that was executed on July tenth, twenty twenty for Mill and Overlay has now been completed. Next, who's controlling the, they are, okay. Next, the District Three, okay, I've talked a little bit about that. Let's move on to the next. The District, I reckon, District Three, Duncanville Striving PSA executed on July tenth with the work to be completed in November. And of course, we've pretty much done that. We can talk about the NCAD services and that the 2020 road race strapping includes eight sections of type B roadways, forty-four sections of type E roadway. Now, the ongoing next, MCIP participating in the city of Duncanville is the best Southwest cities in Wintergreen Road. And if any of you have been in that direction lately, you know that we have made considerable progress. I drive it frequently, looking at the detours every once in a while having an concern from our, our collective citizenry with regards to noise mitigation. And we're trying to mediate that as best we can and with the conduct of contractors on site. We're very much aware of that. We take the concern lodged by our mutual constituents seriously. And as such, we try to address it. The Southern Dallas County Regional Vow Up Study, the Main Street Carter Study and the Daniel Dale Road Multi-City Coordination Effort. Next, the city of Duncanville located in Commissioner District Three has the ninth most main road miles in District Three. You're the fifth most populated city in District Three. And of course, we've talked before from two thousand to twenty nineteen, we've had capital funding for District Three of a hundred and forty-seven million dollars. MCIP three funding projects within Duncanville, that's a period of seven point, seven million dollars. And a lot of it includes the multi-partship projects. This is, I think, what you want to get to. The next one is the seventh call for project schedule. The top, total project schedule for the seventh call in all Dallas County is a hundred and forty projects. The project submitted for District Three is forty-eight. And so when you look at there are four districts, we definitely have our lion's share of those projects. In twenty nineteen, you see the MCIP application that were, that was submitted and they were due. Then you see that we did field evaluation of those submitted. In twenty twenty, we finalized cost estimates evaluation. This passed summer and spring, staff recommended to the commissioner's court those projects. And at the end of twenty, we are, we are approving of those selected projects. We expect the fourth, twenty twenty-one, complete execution of the master agreements. And we're going to begin design on those selected approved project. Next, I think is probably where the city of Duncanville seventh call submitted. It's really concerned. This, this call criteria is very clear. We were going to promote regional thoroughfare projects, multi-modal connectivity, transit connectivity, safety, economic vitality and environmental impacts and more. So this next, next slide should be on that. That's what I just talked about. There we go. The proposed projects and location. The Main Street and Camp Wisdom project intersection includes approaches plus proposed bike trails. That is three tenths of a mile. And of course, the Wintergreen Road project phase two. As you know, we're in phase one and that's thirteen hundred feet east of Main Street. At the end of phase one, right that Cockrell Hill, which is eight tenths of a mile. The project type, as I just talked about, the criteria for Main Street and Camp Wisdom is innovative and alternative mobility solution because of the, the proposed bike trail. And on the Wintergreen Phase Two project, it's road capacity and connectivity. We've, along with our other partners in the area, DeSoto and all, they have agreed and we have continued on that, on that course. The other key regional projects next is of course, the large one next is next, right after that, Loop Nine. This is real critical. And of course, by the end of the presentation, you will hear that we invite Duncanville to join us on November the nineteenth at nine AM in the Southern Cities Meeting. This is what Travis Campbell of Tech Stop is going to speak to us about our projects in this area. But Loop Nine, that Carter A is US sixty-seven I thirty-five. It's to construct two lane of frontage road, ultimately six. But to construct the interchange at the US sixty-seven. We do not know who's going to lead this project yet, but the segment is eleven point two miles. And the cost is three hundred and twenty-two million dollars. I think Duncanville was on the COVID-19 mobility impact. If not, Mr. Mayor, I will generate that over. It was part of the Southeast Area Transportation Alliance, along with the Best Southwest presentation given by Michael Morris. What it basically did is it demonstrated how much that COVID-19 had impaired mobility. What, what basically stay at home, stay, stay in place had done. What telecommuting could possibly do if there was some, not some kind of retrofitting to the whole mobility plan. When you see what DART is doing with their early retirement, you understand the kind of impact that COVID-19 has coronavirus has had on, on public transportation. The same with North Texas Toll Authority, with the airport, as you know, on and off. So I will share that should any of the council members, manager and you, Mr. Mayor, are interested. Carter B is US sixty-seven to I thirty-five. That's the second phase of this project. But it is began, they construct two lane frontage road, six lanes, ultimately frontage road. Project lit is, was March the twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and the segment eleven point four miles. That was two hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. Again, we will, we'll talk more about what that funding looks like in our presentation on November of the nineteenth, and we invite all of you to be a part of it. The inland port transportation is, is next. You've heard us talk about the TMA, an organization of business local governments dedicating to solving the local transportation concern. It usually focuses on travel needs of large employers or often created to give businesses a voice in local government transportation planning to advocate enhanced mobility and reduce employer costs of implementing individual worksite transportation programs through econo, economies of scale. Let, let me just explain real quickly. There's a lot that's going on in the inland port. And while Duncanville is not directly in the, in the center of it, it has profound outreach in terms of its technicals. We look on December the fifteenth to present to the commissioner's court the largest construction of a regional distribution center in the North Texas region. I think recently, there have been a number of reports, and I know, Mr. Manager, if you've not had a chance to share, I did generate that with regards to where it, it spoke about the occurrence in the inland port area in terms of not only the industry that was coming into the area, but, but the impact it is going to have on the region. And which the, the challenge that companies have in relocating is one of public transportation. And thusly, the transportation management organization was formed, has been funded for the, the next two years by the North Central Texas Council of Government. And of course, you see here the, the directors, board members of this organization. Alberta Blair being the chair, Frankie Lord of Holland Depot being the vice chair, Ken, Prokien Gamm will be in the treasury, the late honorable Curtis Dean McCowan, what Mayor said that was, was the secretary. In their next meeting, which was supposed to be December the seventeenth, I've asked them to, because of the holidays and all, to reconsider that meeting for January. So I didn't want anybody to be confused by this presentation. Just made that determination today. And kind of lastly, you've probably been on the fringes and hearing a lot with regards to the Dallas County inland port and the port of Placamines recently. That's the next slide and the last one. Recently, Dallas County entered into a, a MOU with the Port of Placamines. When you look at the Port of Placamines, it is west of New Orleans. It is a port that, as you can see from this, that is situated in proximity to the Panama Canal. Not, not far from the Suez Canal. And so what we're basically seeing is a paradigm shift of this country with regards to what we call import-export. Right now, as you know, most of the products that come into our region basically are trucked in from Long Beach. As you look at these numbers, the fifth largest GDP in the world, we have an opportunity now in the, in the southern sector of Dallas County to be a major player. Right now, Union Pacific has a railhead that did ends in the Placamine. I have made a presentation to the Port of Placamine along with East St. Louis and the Port of Memphis. And so we are now moving forward with an engagement with the Port of Placamine. All of the cities have in fact been briefed with regards to the, the possible impact this port is going to have on the southern sector. Recently, I have engaged talks with my Travis County Commissioner. As you know, in the last several years, a little small car company by the name of Tesla moved into his, his district there in Travis County. And there's also a rail in Spur there in a place called Tate, Texas. And so we've all come together and began to realize the kind of impact that the Port of Placamine is going to provide to not only the southern sector, but the connectivity between here and Travis County and of course, back into the, the Port of Placamine. And so I, I just want to thank Duncanville for understanding the critical need of engagement to talk about this connectivity as we move into a critical area to, to bring together the kind of economic vitality that the southern sector has, has longed for and is just now coming into its own. I know that there are some, I don't know, my engineer, one of my engineers here with regards to scope and whether or not we're going to deal with the city of Duncanville. Okay, do they have access to this as well? They do? Okay. With regards to this project scope and there are a number of scope of the Main Street, the pre-engineering study with Dallas County, do you have that in your, in city of Duncanville? It's that handout number one that you, you should have. That's the meeting I talked about with Travis Campbell, who was a professional engineer with Tech Stop on November the nineteenth. And we invite all of our Southern cities to be a part of it. The, the project scope for handout number one is a, okay. And I'll get into any questions you have, Mr. Mayor, just a minute. But I just wanted to be considerate of your time with regards to these projects and then the scope of the project. I haven't seen it appear on the screen yet, but it is handout number one. If the city secretary is in fact, being in that particular. This, this shows that all six of the projects from Nance all the way back almost to I twenty. Still not showing up on the project. But I'm, I'm sure the city secretary has them in terms of handouts. Project, handout number two, of course, is East Camp Wisdom Road and the variable right of way. That project is out there. I've given you at least seven handouts. The other, the handout for number three is the Main Street project as Davis comes in.
Commissioner Price, this is Greg Ramy, Polite Works Director. Those were going to be incorporated into our Main Street corridor study, sir.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Then I'll tell you what I'll do then. I'll, what I'll do then, Greg, is with your permission, if there are any questions to what I've already briefed over, I'll be glad, be glad to answer them. Duncanville has been a great partner and
Commissioner Price, member question.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, Commissioner Price and good evening, Commissioner Price. Thank you very much for all you do for us here in District Three. And we really, really appreciate it for sure. And then of course, us being a partner as well. Hey, I do have a question though of the transportation on the inland port. You mentioned that, and you're right, that we don't have much participation on the inland port. As I was on a, one of the calls, I think it was, I'm not sure who was hosting that call. But Duncanville was very, was mentioning very little because we were concentrating more so on the rail system versus the inland port transportation. So what comments can you help us to kind of get our better hands around what our vision is on the, on the rail system versus the overall just transportation on inland port? So can you address that a little bit more?
Well, the, the whole Transportation Management Association was designed really around our employers that are, are basically suddenly in the inland port area and be able to provide transit to those individuals, to, to the work, the workforce, to that, to those destinations. And, and of course, Duncanville, like, you know, DeSoto, like Werremo, like Hutchins, like all my cities, Muskee. I mean, they had, they have no public transportation. And one of the, the real challenges when we meet with the chambers, the regional chambers, almost the second question, it's, it's not about what kind of school you have, but you know, it's not about public. They said, what are, what's your transportation line? And so as the engagement service. They said, what are, what, what's your transportation like? And so as the engagement for the Transportation Management Association is that we entered into a contract both with DART, uh, with Uber. Remember, all of our cities that we're talking about now are outside of the DART service area. All, all of my cities are, except for that portion that is south of Loop Twelve that, uh, is totally confined in the city of Dallas. And so now, with Councilman Tenell Atkins and my contributions, we have created the inland, uh, port tra- uh, Transportation Management Association along with all, uh, a lot, a number of the, uh, businesses in that area and have begun to ru- uh, run routes with regards to, uh, destinations at, uh, places of employment. So what you basically have is Star Transit, uh, DART, uh, Uber on demand, all part of a conglomerate called the Transportation Management Association. They are running routes in a number of the cities now and, uh, but there is a transportation on demand. One of the number one issues with Amazon is employee, employees within a one mile radius being able to get to their, uh, destination, employment destination. Uh, Home Depot understands that, um, FedEx understands that, um, Amazon, all of our, our, our large employers that are coming in. And so that's, that's what has created that transportation and it has been very, very successful. People are looking for some expansiveness now, uh, with regards to, um, that, that public transportation. That is just such key, Councilman, if in fact, we're going to continue to have some of the largest, um, providers of, uh, workforce and employment, uh, in the, in, in this region.
Hey, so, so I, I would totally agree and of course, we do see the big picture and we know the big picture is not just us, but of course, uh, I won't ask for forgiveness to say I have to think about Duncanville, of course. And when I do, I purposely say to us that the, since we don't have any other transportation other than we, we see future rail system or as you mentioned, Uber. Uh, I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make the connection for us other than being able to pull from, um, other cities because they, because we're close by. So I'm trying to get, I'm trying to make the connection. So hit me one more time, connection, other than that it's close, close to us.
Right. Well, you, you're in, you're, you're in proximity. You, you're, you're on that, you know, you're in that, that corridor. I mean, right now, we're, we're doing some, some studies in terms of where the workforce is hailing from. You know, the, the real travesty that, that some of us have studied for years is that the executive workforce is coming from outside of Dallas County primarily because of housing. Now, it's southern sector, but it's southern, uh, territory. It's Mansfield. It's, it's those areas. And so we, we have a very, uh, basic, um, balancing act here that we're trying to do. We're making sure that we can create, uh, the kind of, uh, housing in, in areas that historically have not had, had, uh, uh, the appropriate housing, work, workforce housing and, and what I call executive housing. Because, yeah, I mean, you know, I know Duncanville's got a, a number of subdivisions where, uh, you know, you, you have four hundred thousand, a half million dollar, I get all of that. But, but, you know, and that's where you get your, your, basically your executive house. But you know, we've got to have workforce housing as well. And even though I've got cities as far away as, as the Bong Springs of the world, they're on that twenty, uh, spine. They're on that corridor. And so as a result, by the way, they have, that was the first place, uh, I bought Star Transit out of Kaufman County as a rural cooperative. And so it is, it has, it has, its tentacles have, have reached, uh, since then. Uh, but no, Duncanville, you know, I understand the challenges, um, with Duncanville, but you're not that far away when you begin to talk about, especially, you're talking about Loop Nine. You, you, I just told you, you know, you're, you're, you're right there. So with that, that, when, when, when you get to my, the areas where this largest and you'll hear it on the seventeen, I'm kind of under no disclosure right now, but on the, on the seventeen, you will hear that, that Sunrise Road, um, and I'm talking about a, a, a building of over almost two million square feet. That's just one of the buildings. Sunrise Road is that north, south corridor coming off of Pleasant Run going into Loop Nine. I mean, that's it. It's just right there at Lancaster Airport. It's just right down the street. And so when you, when you look at the, these frontage roads that I talked to you about, uh, a few minutes ago, uh, plus when you look at what we're doing in conjunction with the, you know, the, the Pleasant Runs of the world, you, you're talking about right in the center of, um, of, uh, the inland port. I mean, I know Duncan, you see, you, you know, the kind of things you guys out there take for granted. I mean, I, I'm building water towers. I'm building five hundred gallons above storage. I'm doing two million below storage. I'm building the pump station that the manager talked about a few minutes ago. That's for the inland port area. That's Pleasant Run. I'm managing to create the kind of test districts that help create water lines. I, I, I got to deal with DWU, but I also got to deal with TRA. And so I'm just saying to all of us, we're all in this together. That's, yes, they went back to the Loop Nine corridor. That's it. That's, you know, you, you guys, we're going to be there now. The, the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, March deal, I mean, again, eleven mile, two hundred and, well, basically three hundred, uh, million dollars. And we're, we're going to talk to Travis on, on the nineteenth, right, uh, regarding that. But we've already basically, you know, you know, commenced and Duncanville is there. And Duncanville's challenged historically and you've got some great people, but again, you're, you're landlocked to, to a certain degree, but you, you provide such value, uh, in terms of being able to, you know, your, your workforce, your demographic, you've got to be able to get them to the center. I, I say that the Port of Placimines, the MOU with the, uh, Dallas County inland port is going to do for the southern sector, basically what Texas Instrument did for, for, for North Dallas. Uh, uh, you know, I may be the only one, you know, with that vision, but, but, but I'm, I'm holding tight to it. And when we went to Placimines to make our presentation, they were excited. And so, uh, like I said, all up and down that Mississippi River, everybody understands that Dallas County is in play with Placimines and UP, which already has a railhead and has a naval base at Placimines. We toured it, uh, they have a naval base, they, they have the potential for expansion. There's a number of things that are going on, uh, ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, you know, I'm just glad to be kind of in the center.
Okay. Well, I'll reserve, I'll reserve my, my being capped at three percent for later and then also hopefully later you will.
I understand that is your belief. We talked about that today too.
Okay, all right, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll conclude my comments for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilman Cooks. Uh, Councilmember Jamison, she has a question as well.
Sure.
Yes. Hello.
Yes, ma'am.
John Wiley, we appreciate you coming and joining us and being with us and, uh, couldn't be more thrilled to go straight to the person, uh, in charge. Uh, on one of your slides that you showed, it said Camp Wisdom and Main Street and that was, uh, the, in, the original intent of the bond proposal was to raise the intersection at Main and Camp Wisdom to soften the transition at the railroad tracks. And that is what, uh, most of our citizens are anticipating. And we were told actually at a budget meeting that, uh, in June and had not heard about it again until it was on this agenda, uh, that Dallas County, uh, refused to match the funding for that. And, um, so I just wonder if, uh, I understand that the railroad was not being very cooperative?
That is correct.
Well, um, and I realize that that's a, a federal issue, but is there not something that we could do? Because we're going to have to be involved with them on a roundabout also, but, uh, that, um, area at Camp Wisdom and Main Street is what the preponderance of our citizens are expecting. I get phone calls all the time, when are we going to start fixing that? Because people bottom out as they're going to the Kroger. And I mean, it's a horrible design. It should never have been that way and certainly not left that way. But, uh, that was the original intent of that, that bond project. And now, I mean, nothing was ever said about a roundabout until this came up. And this is going to be a big shock for most of the citizens.
Well, when we talk about, uh, Councilwoman Jamison, when we talk about Camp Wisdom, um, and, and even with, even with the, the, the city of Dallas, uh, we, we, the grade on that project, and again, as you said, uh, the railroad has been very cooperative. The traffic efficiency, the pedestrian mobility, the, the rail station connectivity, it, it's, it's, we were talking about the roundabout at Center and Main. And, uh, and I think that that's a handout, the, uh, Nance to the, the center that's proposed. It's an option six, uh, that, and I know Greg will talk about it, uh, at, at some, uh, later, uh, I'm sure, presentation. But, but to convert Center and Main intersection to a non-signal roundabout, uh, and to close Santa Fe north of Center and, and improve, uh, the, the signalization at the Nance intersection. I built, I built, um, a, a roundabout, Bedline Pioneer, built one of the first roundabouts in, in this region. I am now in the process of building a roundabout in, uh, Sunnyvale. Uh, let, let me just tell you, the only roundabout that I have, uh, hesitated on is when they began to talk about a truck roundabout, uh, a tractor truck roundabout in, uh, in the inland port area. And I, I haven't foreclosed it. I'm just, I'm just, uh, now the, some of these, as you know, some of these trailers are going from fifty-three foot to fifty-nine and with the radar, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get through it. But let me just tell you, in terms of traffic management efficiency, roundabouts are the way to go. I, we, we are just not going to be able to, uh, and you, you've probably dealt enough with transportation though, when the railroad digs in, they basically dig in and we have to have an alternative, uh, to be able to try to manage the traffic around. That grade is horrible. I, I, I traverse that area all the time. I come off of twenty, I go through there and it's, it's, it's horrendous. But we're going to always have to have an alternative. And, and, you know, we're just going to have to explain to the citizen that, you know, it, it's not within, totally within Dallas County's purview to say, hey, you know, we're, we're going to do this. Uh, I think when, and, and I'll let Greg, uh, uh, speak to it, uh, but when you talk about Center and Main Street and, and, and converting that to a non-signal, uh, roundabout, you know, Europe, uh, years ago, and again, real quickly, um, fifteen years ago, they, they had to really convince me and they're doing it, of course, of north. But in terms of controlling traffic, in terms of, uh, incidents and accidents, you, you, you get nothing safer than a roundabout. And so, uh, I, I, I hear you. I understand. It's both our constituency, but we, we can't get there even with the, you know, with the city of Dallas, um, with regards to, you know, that whole Camp Wisdom piece. And I, I don't know what we're going, uh, to do, but right now, uh, I'm not willing to let them, uh, uh, be the, the stoppage in terms of moving traffic, uh, in and around the Duncanville area.
I guess I didn't follow. You're not willing to let who stop it?
Uh, not, not, not willing to let the railroad say, hey, you know, you know, the, 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 we're not going to, we're not going to participate. And as such, you know, I mean, that, that's the end.
And who is it that we talk to, uh, about getting the railroad to come to the table? Because that, that's got to be fixed.
Well, let, let, let me, let me explain something. I haven't been a commissioner for the last thirty-five years. You know, the railroad is in unto themselves.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they, if they decide they want to come to the table and deal with it, they, they do. If they don't, uh, I haven't seen an agency lately that even, you know, maybe federal transportation, but you, you don't, you don't get a chance to force them to, to the table. They, they're pretty...
What do you think? Like maybe Eddie Bernice? She's on the Transportation Committee, federal?
Uh, I, I, I recognize that. But again, when you deal with the railroad, keep in mind, I just dealt with all that high-speed rail. And again, until they get, get ready to come to the table, they just, they usually don't. I, I don't have any problem with you, um, um, reaching and reaching those tentacles to try, but, uh, we just, we, we dealt with the railroad before and, uh, and continue to try to deal with them. Uh, at my road and bridge district, uh, because of the stoppage and the, the juveniles in the area, uh, I went in and built a six million dollar road to come in the back way. I've dealt with them for thirty-something years. I could not get them to budge. So I built a connector between Cleveland Road and Langdon Road to the tune of over six million dollars. I could not get them. I tried, Councilwoman, and they, they wouldn't budge. So I, I built an alternative. That's what I'm saying to Duncanville. I, I recognize, we're, we're just going to have to, um, explain that in terms of, of, of transportation, traffic efficiency, that this is going to, uh, have to be right. That grade is, is, is horrible and until they consent to, 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 we, we just, and I think Greg, uh, I'll let him explain that just as an engineer, uh, what, what that, what that'll do in terms of just cost. When we could be moving with regards to, uh, uh, Center and, uh, Main, uh, and, and, and close Santa Fe, nor, north of Center. But, you know, again, that, that's your...
Well, what is it, what is it exactly that, that they are, uh, taking issue with? Is it the construction?
They don't want to drop, they don't want to drop the grade. They don't, they don't drop the, the, the grade. I mean, that's it. I mean, you got to, the, of course, you know, the, the grade. And that means you'd have to basically drop those, uh, those, those tracks and lower Camp Wisdom, because you're not going to build, not going to build it up to it. Cause at the end, that, that defeats your purpose overall Main Street. So you have to drop the grade. And that, the grade is, uh, is horrendous, but it, but they're, they're not willing.
Well, I think from what I understood, uh, because once again, we've only heard about the roundabout at a budget meeting in June and now it's on our agenda.
Well, I agree. We're just, we're just pitching it to you. It's, it's your call.
Right. And what my understanding was, was that Dallas County didn't accept the two engineering, um, schematics that were, um, offered.
For?
Camp Wisdom and Main Street.
Yeah, because, again, not just because we didn't have anything else to do, it's because the railroad and, and we've done that outage. But again, I invite you to, to, you know, to reach, re, try to reach out to them through, uh, federal transportation efforts. Uh, we'll, we'll see what the incoming administration, but, uh, we'll, we'll see. We'll see what the incoming administration, but we'll see.
Yeah, I'm just.
Thank you, Commissioner Price.
How we can.
Questions for?
How we can move forward and get it done? Because Center Street and Main, at Main was not an issue. I don't know, you probably are aware that a few years back, we took that road down to slow traffic down to supposedly get people to stop and shop on Main Street. And traffic is backing up because of it. So it's almost like we're now going to do this to fix a problem that we caused by backing up the traffic on Main Street.
Councilmember Jameson, thank you for your comments. We really need to move on towards the briefing by the city. Commissioner Price, we also want to thank you as well. I'd like you to stay with us on Mr. Ramey's presentation.
Hey, Mayor Protem, excuse me. Before we move on, and because I have citizens that want to make, I want to, we hear from our staff, our citizens hear from our staff, citizens hear from us. But Commissioner, can you explain really quickly because of time? But can you explain how the Dallas County Seventh Call Project works? And if, if for any reason we pass on any project, what then, how those, the funding moved on to other projects? Can you kind of explain that to the citizens as well, since everybody's listening?
Well, what we do is, we have, we have a call for projects, and cities submit those calls, one of those projects. Those projects are graded, and they're graded on, you know, again, regional, you know, mobility. It may be your priority, but we, one of the things we try to do is talk about connectivity. And regional mobility is one of those talents. As I said back over earlier, we look to see what the third project, we look at the multimodal connectivity. We look at the transit connectivity, the safety. I mean, that's the reason we're, we're doing, one of the reasons we're doing, you know, the Water Green Project with three cities. The economic, you know, vitality and the environmental impact. And so when we look and grade those projects, then we basically push them back out and says, hey, okay, this is the way your projects have fared against other projects that have been submitted. Now, you know, every city has, you know, a ton of projects. But we basically say, okay, based on, again, your miles, the last call, the sixth call, did you in fact complete that, you know, connectivity, that regional therapy? I think the mayor, and I talked about it, and you were there at the dedication. Well, I mean, the project was, you know, with Duncanville, we went back and forth. That project was 10 years in the making. I mean, 10 years and $10 million. When we began, that project was a $6 million project, you know?
And how much is, how much is this project for seventh, seventh call? What's the amount?
What is the total amount that we're spending?
Yeah, that the county, that the county is invested in the seventh call if we go with the roundabout.
Well, we got 140 projects, and we're still, we're still looking at, you know, what is going to be the cost. We, we don't probably know because, keep in mind now, we're going to begin the design in 2021. We've selected the project because of the cost estimates and evaluations. But we have not, all we've been told is that each one of our projects, how many we have in each district. And I don't think we've done a calculation, but I'll sit down and do a calculation of your projects as well as the other 48 projects in my district.
Okay, thanks again. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman Cooks. Good question. Again, I'd like to turn it over to Greg Ramey to do the city presentation as well. Commissioner Price, I want to thank you. I hope you stay with us as well.
I will. Thank you.
Evening, Commissioner Price, Mayor Protem McNabb, council and city council. We'll get started as soon as the slides get loaded. Again, for those participating online, I'm Greg Ramey. I'm the Public Works Director. And tonight we'll be talking about the findings of our Main Street corridor study. With me tonight is Tom Morris. He's the project manager from IEA, who, that was the engineering firm hired by Dallas County to conduct this study. Again, this was a partnership between us and the county. And then also with us tonight that will be briefing is Molly Lox from Burgess and Nyepal as we talk about the recommendations down at Main and Center. And so there will be a combination of myself, Tom, and Molly discussing this project and this presentation. Next slide, please. So again, just some background. Back in November of 2018, under bond election proposition B, the citizens voted $6.6 million for Streets. At the time, the plan was to budget $1.5 million for the intersection at Main and Camp Wisdom, assuming that we would, that location would make the selection for the seventh call for projects where we would get the match. And we'll talk about that later in the briefing. So in May, we entered into a project-specific agreement with Dallas County for that Main Street corridor study, looking from I-20 to Center Street with specific focuses at Camp Wisdom at Main, East Davis at Main, and Center at Main of those intersections. And again, this would help provide the recommendation for corridor improvements along the entire stretch of the corridor and would inform the Seventh Call for Projects. As again, we looked at the entire corridor because what we wanted to do, our goal was to figure out which project would be the optimal project for Seventh Call. The project, the corridor study kicked off in September of 2019. And then in October, October 2019, the Seventh Call for Projects submitted was Main and Camp Wisdom. And again, that was at the very beginning of the corridor study. At that time, we hadn't really had a chance to do the study yet. But we, that was, we knew that going into this, that that was our primary area of concern as mentioned in the bond project. In December, we did an in-progress review meeting with the city and county staff, and we looked at initial concepts at all three intersections. Again, at Davis and Camp Wisdom at Main, Davis at Main, and Center at Main. That was when we discussed the challenges with Main Street at the Camp Wisdom intersection. And that was when it looked like Main at Center and Main at Nance, those, that areas more downtown looked promising. Next slide, please. So in February, we did an in-progress review with the county director of public works. She said that, you know, as we, when we briefed, based on the goals of the Seventh Call for Project, and again, we'll talk about their criteria and all the segment options and how, and how they scored by the county. This project at, the recommendations at Main and Center and Man, Main and Nance looked to have the match or looked to be most, meet the goals of the Seventh Call Project. And based on, again, based on the goals of Seventh Call, the Main and Camp Wisdom intersection did not look to meet those goals. And at that time was when we extended the scope of the project from ending at Center Street to ending at Nance so that we could fully study the area and again, get us to tonight. So in June, during the, it was during budget, but that was the opportunity we had to update council on the project, progress of the project. At that time, it talked about moving the Seventh Call Project, Bond Project location from Camp Wisdom to Main. You would ask for additional details on the corridor. And one of the outputs into February was, you know, before we look at Main and Camp Wisdom, we needed to get a better handle on Camp Wisdom as well. That's arterial in the city. And what we had talked about in June was to start working on getting a Camp Wisdom Road corridor study. So in June, I sent some initial memos to Dallas County, letting them know that we were thinking about potentially moving the Seventh Call Project down to Center Street. And at the same time, based on feedback in June, I started the ball rolling on getting a partnership with the county to do a Camp Wisdom corridor study. In October, there was a Main Street corridor study briefing, again, the city and county staff. Next slide, please. And that brings us to tonight. So again, let me, can you go back one slide, please? So, and we'll talk about the goals of the Main Street corridor study. You see here, traffic efficiency, pedestrian mobility, connectivity to a potential rail station. That was something that was identified in the comprehensive plan. And economic vitality were the primary goals of the corridor study as well as identifying the best project for the Dallas County Seventh Call. Later on in the slides, you'll see the linkage between the goals of the corridor study and the evaluation criteria for the Seventh Call. What I do want to talk about and highlight, now at the bottom of this slide, all these, we created tables for each of the segment options with, along the corridor, and rated them on whether the recommendations has a positive impact, a neutral impact, or a negative impact when compared to the goals of traffic efficiency, pedestrian mobility, connectivity, and economic vitality. And again, you'll see those for each of the different segments. Next slide, please. So again, here's the map of the entire scope of the project. I'll orient you to the map. North is to the right where I-20 is. Segment option number one is the, the street between the eastbound Frontage Road and Camp Wisdom. Segment two was focused at Main and Camp Wisdom. Segment option number three was Main Street between Davis and Camp Wisdom. Segment option number four was the intersection at Davis and Main. Segment option five was the segment, was a road segment between Davis and Center. And then segment option six encapsulated the intersection at Center at Nance, Center at Main, the Nance at Main, in the interval between those two intersections. And then as you, as we continued to study, it grew to encompass Nance up to Santa Fe Trail. And again, what we'll be providing in the slides that follow, we'll be summarizing each of the segment options. We will be talking about what the current condition of that segment option is. And then we will also be talking about a recommended solution for that segment option. And then evaluating that segment option against the study goals. And then at the end of the project, at the end of the briefing, again, we will summarize the six different segment option recommendations. And we will compare them amongst each other based on the county goals. And that will, in turn, help you understand the recommendations that we will be presenting with you tonight. Next slide. Oh, and then just one other thing before I turn it over. You noticed on the map that I had previously, Project Scope, you'll see up in the map in red, handout number one.
And yours, right?
As you, as we go through these slides, those handouts, you'll see the handout referencing on particular slides in your packet. And that will tie, provide a blow-up of the slide to help you better understand the recommendation in those particular areas. So again, I just wanted to highlight that, a little handout note, again, that you'll see throughout the briefing. Next slide. So again, I'll turn this over to Tom Morris from IEA. And again, he will walk you through the different segments, segment options for the corridor study. And I'll turn it over to him. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Hey, thanks, Greg. Thanks, Duncanville, Dallas County. Also with our design team, we have design lead Justin Toon, IEA, with us. And with Burgess and Nyepal, they designed, did the design work. And for the southmost segment, segment number six. So we have Dan Degrew and Molly Lox with Burgess and Nyepal. And we could go to the next slide, please? Okay, so the first segment is Camp, is Main Street from Camp Wisdom up to I-20. If we could go to the following slide. So this is an existing road, existing four-lane road in a 60-foot right-of-way. You know, basic sidewalk along the east side of the road. And there's, there's not too much else to it. Let's flip to the next slide, please. So what we propose here is basically reconstruct the same road, but shift it over as far as we can towards the railroad to the, to the west, providing room for a 10-foot multiple-use pathway on the, on the west, on the east side of the road. And you'll see this, you know, that the goal eventually is to have a nice hike and bike trail all the way from I-20 down to, you know, down to Nance Street, where you get to the city library, city hall area. So you'll see that in all areas. The segment to reconstruct would be about $770,000. We wouldn't do it until, you know, the infrastructure deteriorated to the point that it was warranted to do. We wouldn't recommend that rather. It would, you know, pointing out to the chart down in the bottom right-hand corner, it wouldn't, wouldn't change anything as far as traffic efficiency or stimulate economic vitality. It would help with multimodal mobility, connectivity. So it would, would help there. And we can go to the next slide, please? So next slide is, next segment is option two. This is, this is Main Street and Camp Wisdom intersection. And we can flip again to the next slide. So again, this is the initial focus of the, of the study. We have a, you know, a lot of constraints here. It's a, it's a messy intersection. We have two signalized intersections 150 feet apart from each other. And sandwiched between them, the railroad track and the railroad right-of-way. You can see that a couple of the, few of these slides have the little orange circle and arrow and just kind of orients the direction of the pictures on the same slide. If we could flip to the next slide? So, so it was discussed earlier, but one of the, one of the big issues of this intersection is that grade change on the west side of the intersection. It's pretty extreme, especially, especially there at the, at that southwest corner. And again, we have that double, double intersection. And we looked at quite a few things. This, this intersection, we didn't model the existing situation as well as some. This, this intersection, we didn't model the existing situation, as well as some alternatives that we'll see. But it operates at a fair level of service for vehicles. It will deteriorate a little bit when projected out 20 years, but still, still not to fail, still not to, still an acceptable level. Then we could go to the next slide. So we looked at, looked at multiple alternatives for this intersection, including, you know, at-grade signalized intersections, similar to what's there today. We've looked at grade separated or bridge, bridge options. We looked at unconventional configurations. And also, you know, the goal to try to decongest that, that multiple intersection area a little bit, we looked at different options to try to reduce the turn movements from Hudstead to Camp Wisdom. And, and one of the things we looked, and then, then be able to designalize that, just have a stop sign. And one of the, one of the ideas was to extend West Fane Street across the tracks connecting to Main Street. Hudstead is used by quite a, quite a few citizens. There's the apartment complex there, and quite a few single-family homes. A traffic count showed about 500 cars going both, both ways, you know, from, from Hudstead or onto, back to Hudstead at that intersection. And as mentioned, BNSF, we found out their possession, that killed that idea of Fane Street, and took a couple of things, other things off the table as well. And if we could go to the next slide, please? So, so the first, first alternative we looked at, and one thing I need to explain is this, this was, this was the first area of focus of the study, even prior to the, the area to the north that you already saw. All the other alternatives you have, that you'll be looking at, have the hike and bike trail in the, in the cities right-of-way, on the east side of, of Main Street. But at this point, we were optimistic that we could, could maybe get an agreement with the railroad to, to utilize that and put the hike and bike trail in the railroad right-of-way, as well as some turn lanes. So this would, this would be optimal if we, if we could. But this came off the table, along with the Fane option, because of BNSF's position. It, you know, it would, it would help with mobility and connectivity. And this option, it would actually help with traffic efficiency, too, but because it was a no-go, we're showing it neutral. And it wouldn't help with economic vitality. This area is already, already built out. If we could go to the follow, next slide, please? So, so next, next thing we did was, we scaled this back where it would pretty much fit in the existing right-of-way, and it's not too different from, from what we have today. We wouldn't be able to correct that, that grade issue, largely correct it. All of these options have a pretty big footprint and, and big price tag because of the length we need to go in all four directions, or particularly three directions, Main Street, north and south, and Camp Wisdom to the, to the east, to raise up Main Street. Because ideally, you know, the railroad track could be lowered a couple of feet, but, but we know that's, that's not going to happen. So, um, so all our options are basically raising Main Street and redesigning with a, the slight cross slope, where it slopes, you know, the higher side is on the west side, and it slopes across, rather than having a parabolic or, or, you know, crowned high center. And this would, this also would, would help with connectivity, mobility, because it, because it has the, has the 10-foot wide sidewalk, or multiple-use path, has minimal right-of-way impacts. And so this is, this is one option. It wouldn't be too different from what's, what's there today, other than, you know, just cleaned up, newly constructed, and, and it would, would address the grade issue and, and help with that. If we could go to the next slide? Oh, oh, yes, yes, council member. Oh, okay, I thought there was a question. So, so next, we looked at bridge options.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I was going to ask, what were we talking about in terms of money on that?
In terms of cost?
Yes.
But that option was about 2.6 million, not including city utilities or right-of-way costs. So, so, you know, 2.6 million.
We, we have some slides that present the costs for the various alternatives within this intersection. And then we have a slide that summarizes, and later on, we'll have a slide that summarizes all the, the different intersections as well.
Okay, thanks. So, and yeah, we can, we can flip right to the next slide. We looked at two, two bridge options, a two-span that would just span Main and the tracks, and then a three-span that would also span Hudstead. But unfortunately, when we modeled these, these configurations, they, they'd worked great for the through-traffic, east and west, on Camp Wisdom, of course. But the north-south traffic on Main Street, and some of the turn movements from Camp Wisdom to Main Street, were problematic, actually, you know, went way down in level of service and delays. You just, you just, you know, trying to do too many things under the bridge, and it's not, not enough, not enough area for enough lanes that you ideally need. It also would be very complicated with the existing overhead utilities. We don't have, besides just the, the normal, you know, distribution and, and telecommunications, we also have the on-court transmission along the north side of Camp Wisdom. So that would get, that would get complicated and, and costly for, for someone. And those, those are not included in the cost that we'll see. If we could flip to the next slide, please? And again, this would, you know, these, yeah, I think I already talked about that, that's okay. So, um, this is, this is something out of the box, and we looked at quite a few different intersections that are, that are, that do work in some, some situations, some places. But, um, this is called a loon that prevents you from making left turns at the intersection. So to make a left, like if you were going north on Main Street and wanted to go west on Camp Wisdom, you actually have to make a right onto Camp Wisdom, weave over to the inside lane to make a U-turn and go back. And, you know, it's a big footprint, because you have, you know, the huge trucks also have to be able to make that maneuver. So it takes that big, those big ovals, and it's, it's confusing. We, we took this off the table also, and we thought it was, you know, it was interesting, but not going to be accepted, and, and, and probably not really help with, help either. We could go to the next slide? Okay, so again, the, the op-6 was taken off right-of-way because of BNSF. But these, these are the costs for the other ones that range from about 2.6 million up to over 5 million. And if we could go to the next slide, please? These are the levels of, of service. This is just really traffic flow. And, you know, like grades in school, Cs are average, and, and so on. So the existing conditions for the Camp Wisdom Main intersection, you know, operated at a fair level of service, projected out 20 years, they would, they would operate at a level of service of a D, which is still, it's not failing, it's, it's, but it's, it's not ideal. The, the minimal BNS, the minimal impact version of the signalized intersection shown basically keeps things about the same. It improves it just a smidge as we project things out because of a couple of the channelized right turns, but, but not much different from what exists today. And the bridge options, again, you can see those, those red letters, it, you know, really, really did not work well for, for a lot of the traffic maneuvers. And, you know, we really don't want everyone just soaring over our, our Main Street. We want them, you know, we want to favor Main Street. So the bridge, bridge options are not, didn't look too good. If we could go to the following slide? So we, this, the, the scoring that Greg mentioned earlier, based on, you know, traffic efficiency and, and mobility and connectivity to the, to potential future rail station and TOD down there, and, you know, any stimulus for economic vitality that a project might generate. And our scores, you know, if we were going to do anything with Camp Wisdom right now, we would recommend that, that second alternative we looked at, which again, is, is reconstructing what's there, but, but improving the grade issues. But during these, during these discussions, it was, was talked about, that really ideally we should, Camp Wisdom really warrants a, a study itself of the entire corridor from, you know, from 67 to Clark Road, really looking at that before, before putting a couple million dollars into one, one intersection. So that would be, if we were doing anything, that would be our recommendation for the Camp Wisdom and Main Street intersection. So those are all alternatives just for, for segment option two. If we could go to the following slide? So, so the next one is Main Street itself, from the north side of the Davis intersection up to south of the Camp Wisdom intersection. And if we could jump ahead, please? So this, this map, orient you, it's, it goes from, goes from south to north as you go from left to right. And on the top, you can see down, you know, the Davis Street going up there, we have a match mark, and then it continues on this bottom one up to Camp Wisdom. And if we could do it, next slide, please? So existing, existing Main Street here in this stretch, it's in a 60, 60 to 75-foot wide right-of-way. We have four, four, in some areas, five lanes of, of traffic in this area. Basically, we have, we have twice the road we need. You know, we, our traffic counts, even projected out, are, are less than 15,000 vehicles per day. And this current road has, has capacity for 25,000. So we could go to the next, the following slide? So what, what we would propose here is, is really, as far as the main lanes, is what's existing today, south of Davis Street, with two lanes in the south direction, one lane in the north direction. And, and reason for that is there's, there's no destinations, there's no need for left-hand turns, other than the intersection, intersections, when you go northbound on here, because it's, because it's railroad. On the other side of the road, there's destinations up and down. We would propose to, to convert the, the inside southbound lane to a turn only, or at least put the arrows marking it that way, and trying to keep the through-traffic in, in a separate And we, and what we thought here is, you know, you can do something pretty inexpensive in the interim with just striping and delineators, converting those, that extra lane width to what we see in the top right corner, and getting that hike and bike trail. And, and again, this, this would help with mobility, connectivity, and not have much change, I don't think, on economic vitality or traffic efficiency. Even though reducing lanes, we feel this, this three-lane road would, would be a good fit. And, you know, I think we have proof of that, because it's working, working well on, on Davis Street. Our traffic counts are roughly the same, you know, south of Davis and north of Davis on, on Main Street. If we could go to the following slide, and you see those costs associated with that, you know, a few hundred thousand for, for the interim option, a couple million to reconstruct completely. The fourth, the fourth segment option we looked at is the Main Street, Davis Street intersection, and if we could jump ahead, please? This is, this is that intersection as it exists today, looking down on it. Again, we have the pictures and the, we'll assemble to orient the pictures. What's interesting here, it was, it's not a good thing, the cities, the city really does not have, from our, from our survey, our boundary survey and study, the city has no right-of-way for Davis Street as it goes across the railroad right-of-way. In fact, you can even see Hudstead is, is in BNSF's right-of-way. You know, from this point going north up to, I think it's Cater Street or Carter Street. This is, this is the situation. Hudstead is, is actually in BNSF's right-of-way. But really, what's, this intersection as it exists is already improved and pretty nice on the east side and the south side. It's, what's lacking is, is that, is really pedestrian access going, going to the west. And we can flip to the next slide? So, so, yeah, I think I've already talked about all this, pretty much. This, this, as far as vehicles, this intersection operates fine and protected out, it will continue to. Works great for vehicles. Again, the big deficiency is, is that pedestrian or, or cycle connectivity from, from the neighborhood to the west, to, to Main Street. And if we could go, go another slide, please? So that's, that's what it looks like for someone in a, in a wheelchair, or someone, someone walking. It, it's not, it's not okay. We can jump ahead again. So what, what we would propose here, again, the, the road's in okay shape, we, we would propose, there is some extra pavement width here in that, in that eastbound direction as we go across the tracks. What we would propose is, is sawing off the, the curb and gutter, the outside edge of that, of that road on the south side of Davis, and, and reconstructing curb gutter and, and abutting sidewalk. And, and, and pavement markings, maybe. And this can be done pretty, pretty cost-effectively. Greg's already talked about a mechanism that he could, he can handle this one.
It's, yeah, the one, it's not bond money. This was part of the FY21 Sidewalk CIP money that was allocated in FY21 budget by council.
So when we do our measures, this one, this one also, you know, no change to vehicle traffics. It helps, it helps with, definitely helps a lot with pedestrian and connectivity movements, mobility. If we could go to the next slide, please? So the fifth segment option we looked at is Main Street from Center Street to Davis Street. And that's, that's what it looks like, looking down at it. If we can jump to the next slide? So this area, the city owns, and it's, this was improved about 10 years ago, this, this stretch of road. And it, and it, it looks pretty nice, it works, it's, you know, has that same existing main, main lane configuration that we're proposing to continue to the north. What's interesting here is the city also owns the, the parking area. It consists of a slip lane in the center and angled-in parking on both sides. But the only, only pedestrian path along this stretch is, is up against the storefronts. It's, you know, there's no place really for someone to ride their bike unless they're in the main lanes or in the parking lot, or, you know, not, not great for someone that's jogging or something, or just wants to go up and down the stretch. If we can jump to the next slide, please? What we would propose here is, is really converting that area that, you'll see, converting that area that, that was angled-in parking to parallel parking, and, and having that space to, to construct that 10-foot-wide hike bike trail. We would do some parking spots. We would do some parking spots, that would be the trade off. There's currently twenty two city owned parking spaces in there that be reduced to fourteen. So we lose eight parking spaces. But we would get that connectivity and that multimodal connectivity. And and this can be done, yeah, for about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just reconstructing basically that one area that the buffer already exists today. So so the buffer would stay in place. Okay, we could go to the following slide, please. This is segment six. And we can jump to the next slide, thanks. This is, this is a stretch from Nance Street up to Center Street. Everyone's everyone's familiar with this area. If we can go to the following slide. What we what we have here is a a four lane road and eighty foot right of way. In in areas, we have angled in parking on one side. And what I forgot to mention is is one thing with this this area is that confusing intersection with Santa Fe Main Center. Kind of makes like a capital A configuration there. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, okay, there it is. So, um, so again, we have that the kind of the crazy intersection. But this is, this is close to the heart of downtown Duncanville, close to, you know, library, City Hall. Also, the War Memorial Park. As far as traffic flows, it's currently operating at a a level of service of a D. And projected, it would continue to to operate at that level of service. We can go one more slide, please. What we would propose here, and no, everyone's already heard the story, but um, but we would, we propose converting that signalized intersection at at Center and Main to a roundabout. Close, we move in the Santa Fe Trail pavement, the road from from Main Street to Center Street. And and diverting the traffic from from Santa Fe to Nance to Maine, rather than it coming in further to the north. And um, and this this really achieved all the things that we that the study was looking for. You know, improved traffic efficiency, I'm sorry, council member.
Yeah, I had some questions about that. Is there enough room between the roundabout and the railroad on the westbound center to stack cars when the arms are down? And not disrupt the traffic on the roundabout?
Yeah, you know, Molly's gonna do some of the further slides that go in depth in this area. Actually has some animation that that shows shows that visually how those those vehicles will work.
And how many parking spaces are going to be lost on Main Street? Are we gonna, you know, you're gonna change that? So is it equal? Taking out the.
I think there's some modification. You know, and this, this is the area that I should turn turn over to Molly. I think the the plan was Greg's gonna talk the few slides that kind of summarizes some stuff. And then offer to go in depth in this stretch. And um, and and the Burgess and Nyepal did the the detailed work, study work in this area. And this, Molly, do you want to jump in and and answer that specific question about, you know, net changes to parking spaces? Or specific changes to parking spaces along Main Street?
Throughout the corridor, there's a net positive change in parking spaces. There will be some loss at the Nance and Main intersection just because of reconfigurations. But we were able to put in additional parallel parking on the south side of Nance. And then there's not much loss throughout the rest of the corridor. And where there was some loss, we were able to put in additional parallel parking on Center Street. Just east of the commercial center in the south southeast corner of the of the roundabout. So there's a net gain of maybe one or two spots throughout the corridor.
Okay, and I guess you heard my question about. Is there enough room between the roundabout and the railroad on the westbound center to stack cars when the arms are down and not disrupt traffic?
Yeah. Yeah, so we have a simulation that'll show the interaction of the train at the worst case scenario. When traffic is functioning at peak hour and if a train with the current commercial train coming through, not with a passenger car train or a commuter train. But the cars, they they, there's room to stack up. And it's not till about a few seconds before the train clears that no more cars are able to go through the roundabout onto the west leg. But the north and south traffic is able to function fine. So we have a video that that'll show that simulation. But that's worst case scenario, and it's not very likely to happen if ever.
If the only access to the hubcap property is from dead ends Santa Fe Trail. Isn't that gonna kill the economic value of that piece of property?
There's, we don't have the driveway drawn in, but we are still able to maintain their access off of Main Street. So they currently have two access points to that tire center. And we'll we'll be able to maintain both of them with the current layout.
Okay, and you're gonna talk about the Santa Fe and its center?
The, we're we're talking about the the tire center, right?
No, no, I'm saying you're, are you gonna talk more about Santa Fe at center?
Because. Yes.
And there's a lot of traffic that goes down Santa Fe at eight in the morning and five o'clock at night.
Yeah, and we we have the traffic figures for that. And we kind of walk through where the traffic's going and how it's rerouted and what those anticipated numbers look like.
And we have many, many slides prepared for this section that Molly will will go through. And just a few more slides from me.
Okay, any other question I had is, is the War Memorial gonna be relocated or?
It it will be affected slightly. And again, we will talk about that. We have a slide to talk about that in 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 depth in just a few more slides, ma'am.
Okay, if we can jump to the next slide, please. Okay, and I think Greg, your.
So again, as we. As, can you, can you hear me? Okay, so again, as we talked previously, I wanted to take a minute and talk about the project goals as they relate to the segment options. As we talked about, Dallas County has criteria that they were using for their seventh call to evaluate all the the projects. As Commissioner Price mentioned. The seventh call for projects is is competitive. And so Dallas County has scored our project. And these are the criteria that they are looking for. And then the next slide will will show the tie in between the Dallas seventh call projects and the goals of our of our study. Next slide, please. So again, on the left hand side, in the green and the red are the seven seventh call criteria. And then the blue on the right are the goals. As you see for in the red, we did not really look at the the items in red. Mainly, the regional ability was only pertinent when you were sort of comparing between corridors. It was all tied to whether or not a particular road segment was an arterial or a collector and and so on. An environmental for all of these was was flat as and then as well as the the feasibility, again, was something that was sort of external as well to this project. So we were looking at the tie ins between multimodal connectivity, traffic impacts, safety and economic vitality into our goals. Next slide, please. So this is, as a busy slides, let me, let me walk you through this. So on the left hand column, you will see the six segments that Tom had just briefed, going all the way from I twenty down to the Nance Center area. Excuse me, I do want to note that for comparison purposes, when we looked at segment option number two, which was the intersection at Main and Camp Wisdom. We have, we had it evaluated by the county based on the minimum right of way. And as you recall, we showed you sort of all the various alternatives that we studied in detail at that location and showed you that alternative two was of those five was the best for that location. And as you see on the the first, the next set of columns under study criteria, again, that was, this is a summary of the traffic, the goals based on the study in terms of negative impact, positive impact, or neutral impact. And you'll notice in all in all quarters, the pedestrian and rail connectivity was was positively impacted. But only in six was the traffic efficiency and economic vitality also positively impacted. And then as you move over to the right of the slide under seventh call criteria, these are the categories that the seventh call was tied to the seventh call criteria. Those are the different weights that they assigned for the project. Again, these are what you're seeing on the right is how these scored when the county looked at all the sections. And so I want to highlight is that alternative number two, which was again, our original in project that we identified, when it was all said and done, it it scored at a sixty five. But the Nance to Center down at segment option six ended up scoring at a seventy seven point five. The county informed me that the project selection cutoff score was is seventy. So the number six again, based on the county's criteria. And what they told me was their selection cutoff score of seventy. Nance at Center is the most viable and most competitive section to receive be part of the seventh call in order to get Dallas County's partnership for one of our road segments on Main. And again, what we're proposing is recommendations for all of these areas. And so we're looking at two different things from council. And again, you'll see this later tonight when we bring it for individual consideration. Is we're asking your input and and for all the recommendations, are these things that we want to do as a city collectively and then plan for over time and budget for over time? And then specifically, which project do we want to submit to the county in the hopes of partnering with them and and getting their assistance in making one of these projects? Fund, getting it funded and making it reality.
Greg, Greg, can I jump in real quick and just ask? So the total of seventy seven point five, that is not assuring us that we will get funding from the county. It's just has a better chance to do it, is that what I'm hearing?
My, my understanding is, is all the different projects that have been submitted and and there's over a hundred of them are all getting scrutinized against these criteria. And ours came in at seventy seven point five, and I was told that a project needed to be over seventy.
Councilman? Mr. Mayor, council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I I I'm saying to you, Councilman Cook, that that means that number six, Nance to Center or as I'm concerned, will get funded.
Okay, that's that's what I'm gonna do. All right, thank you.
And again, we're we're asking as part of the main, the individual consideration, as well as for planning purposes throughout the corridor. Does what does council think of all the recommendations so that we can start planning those improvements in the bigger scale? Can you go to the next slide, please? So again, the Nance and Center seg- segment option was the 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 project that scored the highest when we looked at all the six, the different six segments. It provided the most mobility and connectivity. As Tom mentioned, it's the project that really that ties into the city, all the city facilities here by City Hall and the and the library. It has what War Memorial Park of a potential rail station again, as in the comp plan. And again, as Councilwoman Jameson asked, we will be talking about the memorial park in the following slides. We do continue to recommend that before we commit to something at Main and Camp Wisdom. We do the Camp Wisdom road study, the corridor study on that one. When we have a regional collector and an arterial coming together. As you saw with all the challenges and everything we've tried to do, we really want to make sure we look at Camp Wisdom as well. And so what we're recommending, when you go into visual consideration later tonight, we'll talk about it again. But that we substitute the project at Camp Wisdom at Main down to the project by Center and Nance. Next, next slide, please.
I'm sorry, Greg, one other question.
I'm sorry.
You want to finish up?
Yeah, let me open up for questions. So what were you asking, sir? I'm sorry.
You go back to a couple of slides where you had all of the projects and whatever rated. So, no, you had it, go back.
Slide forty three, yes.
So did you not say that you were gonna put also the dollar amounts that those, no, we, I saw them in individual slide presentation.
Oh.
But there are slides that show dollar amount of each one of these?
Um, I actually rolled it up in our individual consideration. But I'll run through those again real quick because I'm I'm sorry, this wasn't on this particular slide.
You don't have to go back to it. Well, I'll wait, I just, I was. If you had those.
I I have them, I have them handy. I mean, I can run them through real quick, sir. Option one was seven hundred and seventy thousand. Option two was two point six million. Option three was two hundred and seventy five thousand for the interim, which was just the restriping and delineators, sort of like what we talked about at Daniel Dale with a two point two million doll- dollar final end state. Segment option four was forty five thousand. Segment option five was three hundred and fifty six thousand. And then option six was three point one million. And again, we, and our, when we laid out the budget for at bond time. Our goal was to put one point five million and of city money and one point five million of county money with it. So where our budget total was three million dollars between us, us and the county. Can I answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I I think so, Councilwoman Jameson, yes, ma'am?
Yes. Tonight, though, we're only voting on this roundabout, correct? Because I think the other items need to be talked at, talked about with the whole council. I mean, Barry's not here, but the whole council in going through it. Because this is the first that we have heard about all of this. And the roundabout is what needs to be decided on for the call. Is that correct for the one point five?
So, so yes, ma'am, let me, let me answer your question with in different, to different parts of your question. So the the resolution that we were bringing to council in its current state did ask for, yes, one for council to make a final decision on the what project we want to nominate for the seventh call so that it can go to the commissioner's court in December. But currently, it does also say that the council agreed with all the recommendations. throughout the corridor. So I would have to turn it over to Attorney Hager on what that would look like if you want to tweak the resolution and only look at it as just the nomination for the seventh call with discussion and acceptance of the recommendations to come at a later date.
Well, that's not my question because we can tweak a resolution. My question is probably the county commissioner. The only thing we need to turn in to submit for the call on the money is the roundabout for the 1.5. We can change resolutions.
Tonight, what we're asking for at a, at a minimum, ma'am, yes, is for the, for council to make their final decision on what project we want to partner with the county on. That's the, that's.
I feel more comfortable in having more conversation about the other projects. And I know this is a new thought, but also maybe having some input from the people who this really affects around this area.
Mayor, Pro Tem, and council, the only thing that's for your consideration on the individual item for tonight is the call for projects. So we need to identify that. The rest can be discussed here in work session, but you don't have an agenda item to prioritize one through five this time. It's just a work session item.
Good.
But, but if I could clarify, Councilmember Jameson, let me ask Greg this. I mean, what we're doing is making a recommendation for a project, if it's one of these projects or the roundabout or whatever, which would be the, we would be asking to participate in the seventh call projects, but we would be matching the 1.5 monies that are part of the bond program that would go to the roundabout. Greg, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we're, we're asking for. The deadline for us to submit something to make the seventh call projects is December. That is why this is coming to you. These other projects would then, for the most part, perhaps be off the table because we don't have any other funding that would be able to consider these other items. So that's what's being considered. We could, you know, any one of these could be recommended. What Greg, I think, has briefed on is the fact that what, which one of these meets the criteria that would be successfully funded using the seventh call or meeting the seventh call projects criteria? Is that correct, Ramey?
Yes, sir. The goal, again, the goal was to partner with the, the counties to match the 1.5 million dollars that we set aside in the bond fund for Main Street for a total of approximately $3 million. Yes, sir.
That December what, Paul? You said December, what quarter, what?
Well, the, 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 the cap, Dallas County is considering seven, coming up in December.
December when?
December 15th.
15th.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have another meeting before.
You do have, you have one more meeting to discuss. That is correct.
Okay, well, I just didn't want this to show up again on a slide as we talked to you about this and you agreed to all of these.
No. We're trying to get the, the, the best information that we can in front of the council to make a decision. But yes, as county commissioner Price has indicated, they are considering this by the, by the 15th of December. If we want to have any project that needs to be part of the recommended projects for the seventh call.
Well, my thought is that it would at least give us some time to get the word out to the citizenry because what they voted for and what we need to explain to them is about the problems with Camp Wisdom and Main Street.
And that's very good. Yeah, that's a good point, Councilmember Jameson. Exactly. I think the frustration is that with everybody going into this with the bond program, that there was 1.5 million that was allocated for the Camp Wisdom Main Street project. And, you know, not knowing at the time, but knowing now that the railroad is being very difficult and will not cooperate. I mean, I'm trying to say that in the most politically, you know, correct way of not just throwing them in there, but that's the bottom line is that, as you've, and you've indicated with your questions, that's the problem is the railroad and that, you know, called better, you know, a hump, basically, that causes the great issues at Camp Wisdom and Main Street. So to your point, council members, it's explaining that they have made it impossible. If they're not going to work with us, they have made it impossible for us to do anything there. And as part of the Main Street project study, we've, we were at least looking at other options that are along there that we could possibly participate in the seventh call. Otherwise, we'll have 1.5 million that we will need to determine what we will do with that with those, with those, those funds that were approved as part of Proposition B.
Oh, would you go back and just remind me, I know you should, we shared this before. We, this is not the first time we had an opportunity to have a project that was being matched. For instance, give me an example of Armstrong Park being, having grant dollars. Give me an example of Daniel, Daniel having some match dollars once we made a investment into it. And I'll just be honest with you, it's really hard for me to turn that 1.5 and listening to my constituents as well to turn that 1.5. It was just, it's something convincing, some more, more convincing because my constituents are telling me otherwise, so.
Well, I, so I, yes, I mean, so you're referring to the $750,000 grant that we received from the Parks and Wildlife Department for Armstrong. So to explain that one, the difference being though, that we had the monies that were set aside in Proposition A to cover that project. So the $750,000 that we received in the grant using the Proposition A monies as a match basically leveraged those monies to give us $750,000 that we could add additional scope to that project. In this particular project, it was, you know, at the time, it was, you know, assumed that there might, that, that we were needing an additional match for this project, that the 1.5 that would have been allocated as part of the Camp Wisdom and Main Street project would not cover the full cost of the construction on this project. If, so for example, to simplify it, if we wanted to do something at Camp Wisdom and Main, let's just assume we had the monies to do it, we would still run into the issue of the cooperation of the railroad. So we could sit there, have the full funding for the Camp Wisdom Main Street project, but we would still run into a problem of having to work with the railroad, which could still conceivably, you know, happen. I think it would take a great deal of time. But as Commissioner Price alluded to, railroads are a entity of, to their own, of their own. And, 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 you know, as a local government dealing with a railroad, it's a little bit more difficult in trying to get them to understand that we're trying to solve a problem that affects the Duncanville community or the regional community. So if that answers your question, Councilmember Cooks?
That does. Thank you.
But Councilmember Jameson brings up a point. I mean, it's a frustration and I, I share that frustration with Councilmember Jameson that there was a project that was voted on. But I think the important part to mention is we were trying to go for matching funds. Even with those matching funds, we still run into the issue with the railroad. That's the part.
Go back, you know, go back. I understand what you're saying. We voted, we voted on, and the citizens voted on it. All of us voted on it. But according to what I was reading, it did not specify the street. I know we marketed it being that it would be Camp Wisdom in Main, but the resolution, I guess.
Maybe you need, you need to talk to the attorney. I called Bob and asked him about that. And he said in the bond language that they make it loose enough so that they can do this.
Okay, so Bob, Bob shared that with me. Then, and then Paul, you can have any other comments.
Yeah, the, the bond language in Proposition B is very broad. And it, it, to your point and to Ms. Jameson's point, it does not identify the street. The bond covenants don't identify a street. So it allows the money to potentially be moved to another like project that fits within the parameters of the proposition. True that it was marketed for that troublesome intersection in our, in our city. So you, we do have a lot of latitude that makes it legal. And then of course, politically, you did market it for the idea that you were going to use it for that intersection. But legally, there's no constraint under Proposition B or the bond covenant.
Okay. And I, and I'm sure, I'm sure as I was talking to citizens, if I could say, if you get, if I, if I gave you 1.5, you can get another 1.5 for the 1.5. Benny banking, I don't think I could find it anywhere in town. So, okay, thanks.
Well, I also had conversations and it was, I think, like I talked to Paul and it was, if I gave you 1.5 for a lobotomy, would you take it, take me up on it? So you have to, I mean, if, if, if the citizens want it, if they don't want it though, you know, because this is, this roundabout and, and where it is and what it's going to affect is going to bring a strong response. And I, I just think that we ought to get some conversation out there. Commissioner Price, what you don't know is right now, we're going through rewriting the code book and trying to hire a new city manager. And so we have a lot on our plates, but this is a big deal. And I think that we should get something out there to the citizenry and say, you know, explain all this, that it's a new direction and whatever we need to do to get some buy-in.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members, Mr. Manager, Mr. Rainey, look, first of all, will we, all of our projects have a selection cutoff score? It, it didn't make the score. It didn't make the score. Now, if the citizens of Duncanville, and again, I've been down this road with Duncanville before. I don't want to get into deja vu. And it's on Wintergreen Road. I offered to put up the money, the Wintergreen Road, and then the citizens went in and voted. So I'm just going, for those of you who are new to the council, the citizens went in and voted and the mayor, now they pulled it back. And as a result, I'm going to continue to talk about it. It took us 10 years to get there. Duncanville took it off the table. And that's fine. And that's.
Just the opposite though, Commissioner. They voted not to do it.
I agree. No, I know. I, I got it. I got it. But yeah, no, you're exactly right. But we, but all I'm saying is when we wind up doing it just 10 years later, there was a reversal. All I'm saying is this, for, for, for county money, you've met the cutoff in the corridor. And I agree with the attorney. All covenants, all bond covenants are written with enough elasticity that even, even if you didn't spend all the money on this project, you can move it around other projects once you've expended all the funds that, that, that they voted. So it has the elasticity. It's, it's 70. The only project that makes 70 is, is Nance to Center. And, and again, when you say roundabout, you're exactly right. Citizens, for the most part, they, they, they haven't utilized them much in, in this, this, this deficit region. And they, they, they don't. They don't have a, a real understanding of the management tool that a roundabout presents. And it is a good road management tool. But nonetheless, I guess we, the, you could go back and redo it and, and take the roundabout out. I wouldn't suggest that. You know, but.
Oh, I don't think we have to do that. I think, I just think that we have some work to do before our first meeting in December. And that is to let our citizens know exactly what we've discussed and that the 1.5 would not be available and that we've got a road ahead of us to get the railroad to work with us on the Camp Wisdom Main Street. I've received several phone calls asking, when are we going to get that done? And I had to tell them, I'm not sure. You know, I know it's on the table. I'm not sure. Well, I'm getting more sure. Except that I, you know, we still have not exhausted, I guess, everything that we could possibly do. I realize it might not qualify for the 1.5, but citizens want that hump gone. And I, I, I don't know what else to do except to explain to them the process and what we've talked about here today. We probably should have had this meeting earlier. But this was the first time that it's been on the agenda and it takes a while for it to get out in the community. I know it's hard to believe, but council meetings aren't on their top of their list to go in. Especially since we're on Zoom now. They really do not get as, as involved as they did, you know, in person in the meeting. And even then, you know, the highlight of your day isn't a, I'm sure it's probably much like your commissioner's court.
And, and I would, and I would agree with you, I would agree with you, Councilwoman Jameson. However, there's not going to be a good time at this point. And I think citizens, and at least the ones I've talked to as well, are looking to, for us to make that decision at this point because we're not going to have a crowded council chambers like we would before. And we don't have the time to do it to, to.
We have one more meeting, Tom.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not going to be able to be there. I do have one other question for Commissioner though. Commissioner, if we don't use, take the opportunity to have the 1.5, it simply goes where?
I'll move it, I'll move it around the projects in, in the district. I mean, yeah, I mean that's.
I just wanted you, I just wanted you to say it. I needed to hear that again.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, and as I said, that, you know, it's, it's, I, I will, you know, take the money and, and you know, re, re-appropriate it to a project that, that may score. We, we definitely got more projects, as I said, council. We got more projects than we'll take, submit, yeah, than we have, than we have others. And believe, there's always a project in waiting. But, you know, what you try to do with all of your cities, you say, look, in terms of meeting that criteria, as Mr. Rainey said, you know, that this one, this one meets it in terms of, of, of those, those tenants. And so try, you try to do something in all, all of your cities.
Do you have a problem with waiting until after the first meeting in December and perhaps we can get that out there?
I, I don't have a problem. I just got to post it, just like you guys, timely, so I can get it on my agenda. So we can, you know, we can get, get it.
What's the date of our first meeting? It is.
Our, the first meeting for the city council would be December, the next meeting is December 1st.
Basically, this is my last comment. I'm, I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my comments for the individual consideration because at this point, I'm ready to, I don't have any more questions that I can make the decision from here based upon what I've heard and the information I've gathered.
And, and we still have some more slides to go on regarding the, more of what I would call a deep dive on segment six as well.
Please go ahead with that, Mr. Rainey.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Can you go about two slides down, please? Okay, as I mentioned before, Molly, you met her a little bit ago when we were, she was answering some other questions. Molly Lox is going to do the deep dive on the segment option six. I'll, I'll turn it over to Molly.
Thanks, Greg. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name's Molly Lox. We spoke a little earlier, but I'm a roundabout engineer and planner with Burgess and Nyphle. So over the next few slides, we're going to dive into how we came to the roundabout recommendation at this intersection. Next slide. So with this first slide, this showcases the traffic volumes that we're seeing at the intersections here on Center and Main as well as with Santa Fe and Center. These are the current traffic volumes. They were taken over a 12-hour count last year. So these were pre-pandemic volumes. One of the big things that we noted was that most of the Santa Fe Trail. One of the big things that we noted was that most of the Santa Fe Trail is turning to go up, to go north on Main Street. So as we developed alternatives, this was something that we kept in the back of our head. But at peak hour, there's about 125 cars in the afternoon turning left to go up north on Main Street and about 145 cars in the morning. Next slide. So this is an example of what the existing operations are at the intersection. The letters represent the level of service, which we don't really need to get into. What's important is there's about 30 seconds of delay between the intersections, which means when vehicles utilize this intersection, they're usually sitting through at least one to two red lights. Most of the vehicles experience delay on the Center Street legs and in the morning on Main Street heading northbound. Next slide. So to exhibit how the intersection is functioning and just kind of keep everyone on the same page as we head forward, this is a simulation, so if you hover over it, there should be a play button. And this showcases the peak hour for the, the intersection and how it functions. Important things to note is how cars back up and stack. And sometimes the important thing is how they stack up through the small space between the Santa Fe and the Main Street intersections. There's some confusing geometry here and it, this is part of where the delay comes from, just from this small segment. And it impacts the operations of these two intersections. So as we looked at alternatives, we tried to figure out, how, how do we streamline this intersection? How do we improve the operations of it? But how do we also improve safety so there's not as many conflict points here at this intersection? And yeah, it's just running, this doesn't show the train interacting with traffic. We will show another simulation for that later on. But this is just a quick, quick visualization for how things are working right now. And we can go to the next slide. So as we projected the traffic out to 2039 volumes, the delay increased by about three to four seconds. And what the big difference is, is that an additional leg became part of the LOSD, LOSD class. So we're seeing more delay on the Main Street legs and then the Center Street delay also increased. So now more traffic is having to sit longer at this intersection. Next slide. So as we looked at and developed our three alternatives, the first alternative we looked at was an oval roundabout. This alternative allowed us to keep the Santa Fe Trail leg open. However, we closed the segment that was the little northbound segment since we really didn't need that. We quickly eliminated this alternative, one, because it was a confusing configuration, two, because it had significant impacts to the park. And then three, there was also some impacts to the railroad, which, as we've discussed before, is difficult to coordinate with and would potentially sideline this project. Next slide. So with our next two alternatives, our approach was, how do we eliminate the intersection of Santa Fe Trail and clean up the intersection of Center and Main Street? And make just one, one normal intersection, one signalized or one roundabout or some sort of intersection. So the first thing we looked at was, where should that crossover point be from Santa Fe Trail? We decided that Freeman Street was too close to Main Street. It would influence, if a signal was at Main Street and Center Street, it would influence the signal operations and it, traffic could back up and it wouldn't operate well. The other issue is, is that Freeman Street is offset and would have poor alignment with a new signal there. Next slide. So the next alternative we looked at was Nance Street. It has a much better alignment, there was only a slight realignment that was needed and it allowed for much better spacing between potential signalized intersections. So this is at a nice, fairly midway point between Center Street and Wheatland. And it allowed for the signals to, to function well as well as to not feature, to not have significant traffic backups. Next slide. So for Alternative Two, we've already decided that Nance Street is where our crossover point is going to be from Santa Fe to rail. So the key to these next two alternatives is we cut off Santa Fe Trail and looked at intersection alternatives at Center and Main. So with this alternative, it's a signalized option. We'll dive into its level of service on the next slide, but some highlights for this intersection, we were able to terminate work right just east of the railroad tracks, so we don't impact the railroad right-of-way. We were able to do some roadway pavement reallocation on the east side of the Center Street, Main Street intersection, which allowed us to implement some additional parking there, since not all of the pavement width is needed. And then we were also able to look at alternatives on Santa Fe Trail since it no longer needs to provide four lanes of traffic. It could become a pedestrian route, a bike route, and still allow traffic access if needed. Or in the future, could be, you know, re-allocated to parking or whatever the city would like to see in this area. It allows for a lot of redevelopment potential. And then Santa Fe, or sorry, Nance and Main Street then is a reconstructed signalized intersection. Next slide. So this slide shows us what the operations are for, for these intersections. What's important to note is, Alternative Two, at the Center and Main Street, there's about 18 seconds of delay. So at most, you're sitting through one red light probably. At Nance Street, there's about 17 seconds of delay, so again, about one red light. And it looks odd at Nance because one leg does have a much different level of service than the other legs. This is mostly because there's really a very, very, how do I say this? There's a, a very big difference in the traffic that's on the west leg of that intersection and on the north and south legs of the intersection. There's about 120 cars trying to make a left turn in the peak hour on the west leg of the Nance intersection. Meanwhile, though, there's 500 to 600 cars heading northbound alone on Main Street. So this is just a, this is just a problem that we have to get some priority to the main, to the main north-south route. But the vehicles are only experiencing about one to two red lights if they're sitting on the, on the west leg. And it really just depends on when they show up. If they show up at the very end of, of a green light, they're going to wait longer than, you know, if they show up towards the end of a red light for the north-south movement. So, but it's very few vehicles that are actually experiencing that delay. Next slide. So with Alternative Three, it's essentially the same as Alternative Two. And this is on handout number five that should be in front of you guys. But it includes a single lane roundabout at Center and Main. So obviously, this is the one, the option that we took forward. But with this alternative, we don't need to do work within the railroad right-of-way. We're able to suspend on either side. However, we don't need all of the pavement that we have in the existing roadway on Center Street. So on either side of the railroad, we're able to restripe and relocate pavement west of the railroad. We don't need to remove the pavement, we can just restripe it into one lane in each direction. Then with that additional pavement that we don't need, that could be used for additional parking, stormwater storage or other options, we'll dig into that a little bit later. But really, what we wanted to talk about here was the benefits of the roundabout. By putting the roundabout here, we're enhancing the pedestrian crossing. It's a lot safer for pedestrians, they're only crossing one leg of traffic that is going in one direction at a time, and it's a lot shorter than at a signalized intersection. It's also much safer for drivers. This intersect, roundabouts see about a 78% decrease in injury crashes. Basically, this is because left-turn crashes are completely eliminated because you can't, you can't have that, that T-bone crash, as some people call it. The other benefit of the roundabout is it's got a lower operational cost over its lifetime. And then it can be treated as a gateway entrance also to the downtown landscape and something that really represents the city or represents this part of the area as well. And then it's a traffic calming device that makes it slower and safer for all pedestrians and all users as well. And then we still maintain Nance Street as a signal at this intersection. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk about how this operates. So this act, this intersection operated the best out of any alternative we looked at. There's about 12 seconds of delay, so there's not a red light to wait for. For the most part, when you pull up to this intersection, you pretty much immediately go. There's really not much to wait on, and we'll see that when we look at the simulation. And then Nance performs the same as it did before. And it's just those left-turning vehicles sometimes just have to wait a little bit longer because of the north and southbound traffic. Next slide. So this is where we can kind of zoom in and look at the different parts of this alternative. So this is where we look at the roundabout. So like we said, we were able to reallocate pavement west of the railroad tracks. We really only need one lane in each direction. So that can be done with restriping and is a great low-cost effort. And then east of the roundabout, we are able to add in additional parallel parking on the north and south sides of the roadway, since we also could do a road diet to one lane in each direction. And then we've talked about road diets on Center Street, but we are also able to implement one on Main Street as well. So we only needed two lanes southbound and one lane northbound. So the benefits for this can really be seen in the south leg of the roundabout. We're able to pull the parking that's adjacent to the shopping center in the southeast corner out into what was a travel lane and provide a lot more area for patio dining, for sidewalk, for pedestrian space, for a landscape buffer. There's a lot of different opportunities there. And it also means that even though we're taking a smaller amount of right-of-way from this, or we're impacting this parcel in a small amount up in the southeast corner, we're also giving them a lot more space to, to utilize outside of that. So it's a really negligible, negligible impact that doesn't impact the parcel. Yes? Do you have a question, sir?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. The other things to note, we've talked about the pedestrian crossings and we'll dig into those later. Just benefits and different treatments that we can do. This also provides great pedestrian connectivity on all four legs. There's a refuge for pedestrian, for pedestrians in each splitter island, so they're able to wait until there's a break in traffic to cross. And then roundabouts also slow traffic. So the highest speeds we should be seeing through here in this roundabout are about 25 miles per hour. That's, that's the typical entry speed maximum for a single lane roundabout. And then we're also able to reallocate the old Santa Fe Trail pavement area into more park space and reconstruct Memorial Park as well. If we go to the next, I think if you click, there might be a photo that pops up. Yeah, so this shows how we'll be able to pull the parking that's in front of the southeast parcel into the travel lane where these cars are. So we'll be able to provide at least an additional 10 to 11 feet of additional space for businesses or the city to utilize for different sorts of treatments in front of this business or these businesses. Next slide. So on this slide, which is handout six, we dive into some of the property impacts. So as you can see, there's some small impacts to the corners, to the eastern corners of the project. This is mostly to tie in pedestrian pathways. It's really just to tie in pedestrian pathways in a small corner of the roundabout. In the southwest corner, there's a more substantial impact. However, it does appear that there will not be any impact to the structure. And I'll have a picture that shows up here in a second that we can talk about with that. The most notable impact in this area is to Memorial Park. There will be some impact to the fountain, there's no anticipated impact to the eternal flame. However, the fountain may need to be relocated, we've accounted for that in the cost estimate. And one to two trees may also be impacted, but we will also replace those and we've accounted for that in the cost estimate. But if you click once, there's a picture that pops up for the tire center. So the red line shows.
Let me, um, go ahead. In real quick about the, what we had talked about, and again, we'll, we'll get to it a little bit. But when we abandoned the right-of-way on Santa Fe, that little segment of Santa Fe.
Right.
You know, we, this, our plan contemplates sort of shifting the park west and to envelop that area that we will be abandoning under this plan. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, so this picture that's popped up is, it's looking northbound and just to the right, or to the left, you can see the edge of JB Tire. And the red line signifies the right-of-way line. So our right-of-way, we don't anticipate impacting the, the structure. However, we will have to take, or we will impact the corner of the parcel, but it seems that they are able, they have a lot of city right-of-way that they use. So we've, we've kind of had discussions about this, so we don't think we're impacting them too significantly. It shouldn't impact their operations, they should have full circulation of their lot still and both accesses off of Santa Fe Trail and Main Street still to use. Next slide.
Molly, I have a question. Sorry, if you go back to the previous slide, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
But, but what I see is utility poles, so please address utilities for me as well.
Yes, so for utilities, we do impact, or we do anticipate a few utility impacts there. At this location, there might be one, one to two telephone poles that may need to be relocated. But there's also a AT and, or it's a, it's a large fiber duct underneath the roadway that's within right-of-way. So these pole lines will obviously have to be, they're inside the right-of-way, they'll have to be relocated by the utility owner. But we don't anticipate impacting a significant portion of the utility pole. As you can see, we're tying right back into existing just south of, of the tire shop. So it should only be a few sporadic poles in the corridor that'll have to be relocated. And then there may be some impacts to the fiber duct that they, the fiber may have, the duct, the duct bank, or not the bank, but the, the vault might have to be raised or lowered a little bit depending on how the pavement elevations change for the roundabout. But it shouldn't have significant utility conflicts. So there is another utility conflict that we'll talk about down at Nance. There's a pole pretty much right in the intersection that'll also have to get relocated. But with how we've laid out the intersection, there's an opportunity that it doesn't have to move very far or need new right-of-way acquired for it.
I want to understand that the tire place, what we're seeing there with the red line, that's the only thing it does to them is take out that much of the front of their property?
Well, the red line was to signify where the edge of city right-of-way is right now. So they have built their overhang pretty much right up to that red line. So we're not going underneath the overhang, or we don't anticipate to, but we'll come right up to the edge of it, up, up on the north side of that. But they should still have plenty of area to circulate underneath the overhang or around their parcel. So it, it shouldn't impact their business, they should still be able to function as they function. But they would have less use of existing city right-of-way for parking or something like that if they use that now. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Any other questions on this slide? Okay, next slide, please. So we've talked about this simulation a little bit. If you hit play, hover over it, it'll play again. So this is a simulation that we put together to show how the train, the current commercial train may impact the intersection. This is if a train were to come through at peak hour. So it simulates from gates down to gates up, the train takes a minute to get through. But as you can see, the roundabout functions very well. If this was a signal, pretty much everything would be stopped and you wouldn't be able to utilize this. And where we have vegetation shown, does not need to have vegetation, we just use that to distinguish between where pavement was and where pavement wouldn't be.
Whoa, Molly, you're not showing very many cars turning there, going towards the railroad.
Well, this, well, this is, uh, this is a simulation utilizing peak hour traffic that we projected for in the future.
Well, my understanding is there's a lot of people, the ones that have contacted me or AFIS, that they use that cut-through Santa Fe.
Mm-hmm, where we've got some green grass shown right now.
Well, I don't know if that's where your green grass is shown, but there's Santa Fe cuts through there, goes back to First Baptist Church and. It's, it's a cut-through, there's a lot of cut-throughs through here that, I guess, when someone who doesn't live here looks at it, it doesn't look like it's, it's that big a deal. But I don't, I live north of the city, so I don't use it. But apparently, there are a lot of people who do. And they use this cut-through on Santa Fe who gets to Main Street, and that was one of the things I wondered about, was the railroad rush hour congestion and the railroad arms going down. and the railroad arms going down. It, we don't want to exacerbate the situation.
Well, no, so I think I understand what you're getting at. So in this, in this future alternative, they won't be able to use Santa Fe as a cut through because we're cutting it off and we're putting a cul-de-sac in. So they'll be redirected along Nance up Main Street. And I mean, as you can see, like it backs up for a second, but the second that train clears, the intersection clears. And right now, that train only comes through from what we understand in our analysis, two times a day. So this really only impacts things a couple of times a day. And this is for the, the commercial train. So if it's a commuter train, they're coming through a lot faster and a lot quicker. So it's a lot less of a backup that can happen because, you know, they're not there as long. And typically, they're probably not stopping, they're not going to back up and stop the roadway. They'll be farther to the south or farther to the north, wherever a station may be. So this would, and this is, this is using our 2039 projections also. So I mean, traffic just motors through pretty well is, I think, the other, the other part. But yeah. I guess, does that answer your question? Or are you still, you're still, this is still a big concern?
Well, it is a big concern because I don't think that the train is, is that efficient. I, I know that you're under the understanding that it is, but I think it goes through four times a day. And we've had to talk to them about changing the times that they blew their horn because of businesses and schools and things like that. So.
This looks fast.
Currently, it's only going through twice, twice a day.
Well, you've got a bunch of warehouses that are talking about going in, in our TIF area out there, and that's on the railroad. So I don't know if that will pick up or it won't.
Okay, well, um, this is, yeah, this was on our traffic counts that we took. There's only about 300 vehicles in the peak hour using Santa Fe, so southbound. So those are being rerouted into the roundabout. And then all people using Santa Fe northbound have been rerouted at Nance. So this is pretty much, this simulates those numbers projected 20 years into the future. But then this train, it sped up. This is over about a five to eight minute period. So.
Is there a reason why you can't leave Santa Fe open?
We could leave it open, but it would only function as a right in, right out. The only way we could get it to function and keep this intersection safe and function well is to leave it as a right in, right out solution or roadway.
And I'm sorry, I guess I'm not following. What's wrong with that?
I get, well, I, I can tell you that we do get, I've fielded several phone calls about, over, since I've been here in the last three years about folks complaining about the timing at this intersection with the, you know, the dual intersection and the five, I guess it's like five-way intersection, which is, which is also a challenge. And again, we're, all we're contemplating is the folks that got on Santa Fe at this location, at the stoplight that used to be there at Center and, at Center and Santa Fe, will now just get on Santa Fe at the intersection over at, at, at Nance further down. And in that case, it's still a right, a right turn for them. Which is, you know, they, they would be able to make that right turn onto Nance, whether it's a red light or not.
Right. And with this, it's also, by putting in the roundabout and consolidating this, it also, it cuts the delay in what everyone was seeing at this intersection, what users were seeing. They get through here twice as fast as they were, even in the current situ, in the current, current condition. So they, like, they may not even need to use, would not, not even think about using Santa Fe as a cut through because the corridor is that much more efficient now. There's, there's a lot less waiting than there would ever potentially be. And then this train scenario, it's only a couple of times a day, you know, that it, that it might happen. Potentially, it sounds like maybe up to four. So it's, it's an inconvenience for about a minute to clear everything, you know, after the train's through. But you have to, I guess, weigh that with the safety benefit and the operational benefit that the roundabout provides for the rest of the time at this intersection. But if we go to the next slide, we can kind of dig into, to more about this alternative and how it impacts all the roadways. So at a roundabout, this is, these are some examples of landscaping and different kind of branding you could almost do for the city and make this like a gateway piece into your downtown. These are different examples throughout Texas, as well as one that's a more basic example in Ohio that the Ohio University had designed for their gateway into the campus. But you could go as, as fancy as they did in South Lake with a statue and landscaping, or keep it more simple and easy to maintain like we have in Fort Worth at this Westport Extension Roundabout. That's more of a hardscape detail. Next slide. So I know pedestrians are a concern. As we worked through the study, how to connect pedestrians was a big, a big topic that we had. So we really wanted to touch on this. So roundabouts are a great tool for pedestrians and for pedestrian connectivity. Like we mentioned earlier, they only have to cross one direction of traffic at a time. And for the most part at this intersection, one lane of traffic at a time. So there's a lot less conflict there for a pedestrian to look around for. They don't have to look for cars in multiple directions. They don't have to be worried about if a vehicle runs a red light while they're in the middle of an intersection, what's going to happen. They're just really worried about one direction at a time. For the legs of the roundabout where we have two lanes, so that's the southbound lane on the north side. And then as it exits the roundabout, we will have to provide an enhanced crossing. Ways that we can do that, that are acceptable by federal standards are with something that's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. That's what's shown in the upper left picture. Basically, it's a flashing, it's a sign that flashes back and forth and alerts traffic that there's a pedestrian in the, in the roadway. It catches drivers' attention. It's a pretty aggressive flashing sign. And we would put those on any legs with multiple lanes that a pedestrian may need to cross. And if you think there's significant pedestrian volume, if it gets bigger over time and you really want to bring attention to those pedestrians crossing, we can always add these to single lane legs as well. Another benefit that we'll talk about later in the corridor are pedestrian bump outs. So in the lower left, this is an example in locations where we're able to do a road diet and reallocate pavement. We don't need as much as we have. And we were able to put in some parking or something like that. We can bump out the corner of the intersection to reduce the area that pedestrians need to cross. So they cross the intersection in a faster time span. Gets them out of the drivers, or gets them out of the roadway faster and it keeps them a little bit safer. But in that, it also pulls the pedestrian out and more into the driver's line of sight. So they're able to make eye contact and see the driver, and it helps create a more safe pedestrian crossing. And then lastly, over here in the lower right, these are called Z crossings. Basically, we can put these in splitter islands of medians or, or in splitter islands or medians whenever we have the space. What these do is they force the pedestrian to turn and look at oncoming traffic. And this allows drivers to see them walking up, especially if they're in the middle. It helps them make eye contact with drivers. And it also, on the exit lanes of roundabouts, pulls pedestrians a little bit farther outside the roundabout. So a driver has more reaction time to react to a pedestrian and see them once they're outside the roundabout. Next slide, please. So those are kind of the benefits of the roundabout. Now we're going to step through the rest of the corridor improvements. So along Main Street, we were able to do an optimized roadway footprint, that road diet that we've been talking about. We didn't need all four existing lanes for a significant chunk of, of this roadway. So we were able to implement some, a couple of spots of additional on-street parking by Freeman Street. We also provided missing sidewalk connections and completed a full pedestrian access route through here and provided additional curb ramps. And then we'll discuss it probably a little bit more in the next slide about Nance. But there are some parking impacts by Salon Bloom down in the lower left corner. The parking currently in city right of way goes all the way up to the existing intersection, which isn't signalized. So it, it's not that big of a concern. But now that we've made this signal, made this a large signalized intersection, we don't want the parking to be all the way up to the intersection. It's a safety concern. We don't want vehicles, since it's angled in parking, we don't want them backing out into traffic that's right at the intersection. We want them to have a little bit of room and a chance to get out. However, to compensate for this, we were able to implement some additional parking on the south side of Nance, on the west leg. And then there's also, depending on how the driveways and everything work on the north side of Nance on the east leg, an additional spot or two could also be implemented there. So I'm not anticipating a net loss of spots, parking stalls throughout the corridor. I'm inspect, or I'm anticipating a net gain in parking spots throughout the corridor. If you, but this is on handout number seven, by the way, if you really want to get a good, close look at it. And if you click, I believe we will see the one utility pole that's in this intersection. So this is, we're standing right next to that salon looking south. There's a utility pole right at the intersection. That's the other major utility that will probably need to be relocated. However, as you can see on the drawing, there's, there's a spot for the curb ramps right at the intersection, but then there's some landscape buffer area on either side of them, kind of north and south, or north and west. So the, the pole could be relocated to that area and not have to be relocated out of the right of way. And that way would have less impacts to the entire pole line as well. Next slide, please. So the last part of, well, there's, we'll talk about Santa Fe Trail also, but this is on handout seven C. These are the Nance Street improvements. So with Nance Street, we did need to do some full depth reconstruction. This is mostly because we had to realign the east leg a little bit, just to pull it down and line up with the west leg. And then we also, the west leg of Nance wasn't, it wasn't designed to hold a significant amount of traffic. So we costed the, the needs, or the, the materials and the effort to upgrade that to a better pavement buildup. Also, we've costed the, a new storm sewer. But recently, other public utilities have been upgraded in this area, like water. And then we've also provided some additional missing sidewalk connection. So this connects pedestrians from the Main Street corridor all the way to the Santa Fe corridor in a continuous route. And then we already talked earlier, just the last slide, about the utility pole that's in the northwest corner of the intersection. And then this will be a new signalized intersection. And then we're also able to implement parking, some on-street, parallel parking for sure on the south side of Nance. And then potentially some additional stuff on the north, or initial spots on the north side of Nance on the east leg. It's important to note, there is a pole line that runs along the north side of Nance on the west leg. We're not impacting that, nor are we impacting any of those parking, any of the parking stalls on that side of the street either. Yeah, next slide, please. Oh, and this is just another look at how we had to realign the east leg of Nance to have a better, better lineup with the west leg so that traffic would function better and have cars would be able to go through in a straight line and wouldn't have a deflection through the intersection. It also shows that pole line that we're trying not to impact, except for that one pole right at the intersection. Next slide. So this is one of the last slides. This is, just talks about Santa Fe Trail. So this may be something that we talk about more in depth, but right now, we're showing it where it would be cut off. And when it's designed, it would have a cul-de-sac. We just didn't go to that level of design at this point. But right now, there's a full four lanes here, which aren't needed anymore. This, this layout shows one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. This, this isn't what anyone would have to do. You could do a shared use path down it. You could do bike lanes. You could make half of it for cars, half of it for pedestrians and bikes. You could turn it into parking. There's a whole lot of options for what, what you're able to do with Santa Fe Trail. And as you make those decisions, it can also help guide whatever development plans happen in this area or, or whatever's in the CIP and the comprehensive plan for this area as well. Yes, ma'am.
Santa Fe Trail is a, a street that is used quite a bit. It, it runs alongside First Baptist Church.
Right, and that's just to the south there, right?
Right.
Yes.
But they, they pick it up further north and, and go down it to, to, instead of weaving through the neighborhood to get to Wheatland.
Right, and I mean.
What, what are you saying that, that at the end where it looks like a cul-de-sac, you won't be able to go on it at all?
Well, with this, with what we analyzed with this, we did not connect Santa Fe Trail to Center Street at all. It's, it's cul-de-sac and doesn't touch. The idea was that vehicles on Main Street are turning right onto Nance and then turning left onto Santa Fe Trail to access it.
Yeah, if they're not further north, I guess they, they could.
Can you go back one slide? I think that might help go to the alternative, the one where you have the blow up. I'm sorry, I think it's slide 53.
Yeah, it's a few slides back. There. This one works too.
Well, yeah, this one works. So basically, the, the only, the only difference is that if you're coming from the south, instead of going all the way up to center, you make the right on Nance and then you continue on your way north into town, up to the north part of Duncanville, just on Main Street. And so it's really, instead of entering Main Street at center, you get on Main Street at Nance. That's really the, the, the only, the only difference for people. Or again, if you're going southbound on Santa Fe, you're getting on Santa Fe at, at Nance instead of at, at center. That's really the, the big, big difference.
So you'll have one lane on Main and two on Santa Fe?
You would have, you would continue to have the four lanes of traffic on Santa Fe, south of Nance. And the, the cars that are wanting to go north would just go on, you know, enter, access Main Street at Nance instead of, up, up further north. And then the cars going south would then dump onto Santa Fe through the Nance Street, on Nance Street instead of going through the, the intersection that was up at Center and Santa Fe.
Shifting two lanes on Santa Fe to one on Main.
Well, I think there's one important thing to note. In our analysis, Santa Fe could have benefited from a road diet as well. The, the traffic on it doesn't warrant four full lanes of traffic. It could be reduced down to one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. That was our finding.
The peak, your, your peak finding, I believe, when did you say was like 150 cars an hour?
Yeah, about 150 turning vehicles an hour that are trying to access Main Street from Santa Fe.
And that doesn't warrant having an opening where it is?
Well, our original plan, or our original goal was to try to just reduce the confusion and, and the number of access points at that, at the intersection of Center and Main and clean that up. And so when we were looking for a good point to cross over, we thought it'd be better to do a full, full access crossover point from Santa Fe to Main Street utilizing Nance, rather than only really being able to utilize a right in, right out access for Santa Fe Trail on the Main Street, or on the Center Street. Because with all the congestion and clutter at the intersection, we don't want to introduce a left, left turn access into Santa Fe Trail from Center Street. So it would really only benefit northbound traffic on Santa Fe Trail.
I would like to say something, if I could. I, I would just like to say that besides moving the traffic well through here, I think it also opens up the opportunity for creating a really vibrant block of economic development by, by pulling that Nance, by pulling Nance back is the, is the, the path to, to connect Santa Fe and Main Street. So it actually opens that. So it actually opens that street up, Nance Street, makes it more, a little more retail viable and makes, makes a really good block, which is what you want when you're doing urban redevelopment like this. I think it's a good plan. I think it pulls the traffic back where the traffic causes, where Santa Fe causes trouble. I think it solves a whole bunch of different problems. I think it done a good job. I think it's a good plan.
Thank you very much.
On like 63 or 64?
Yeah. And I think the next slide is just at 64, and that should be the cost estimate. Oh, 65, sorry, yeah. So this might be a little difficult to read, but really, what it gets down to, this breaks out, and it might be more detailed than anyone's interested in. But it walks through all the different pieces and parts that feed into, into this roadway, from the pavement to the signal cost, to a construction contingency, what we're anticipating for the design, kind of walks through all of that. So we're anticipating in 2020, a cost of about $3 million. And then there's some additional utility costs that's over, off to the, sorry, the context spinning around, off to the right or the left there. And that includes some sewer upgrades as well and some water upgrades.
And this would, this would, this work would not be done with the bond. This would be out of the Utility Enterprise Fund.
Perfect. And then the other part we're estimating, oh, go ahead, sir.
Good question. So when we look at this, and we look at the debt, and if it's approved, when you look at the deadline, will the, or we look at the cost, also could move up or down? Well, we'll say up for sure. Because the materials or everything are changing at some point, if it's not completed by a certain time? Meaning, meaning that the overall total cost would be more than expected at this later?
Our experience is that we, we anticipate escalation every year. So, right, the, the, the further out this goes, the costs get more expensive. Typically, pricing goes up about 3% a year.
Right. And that's part of why we have a contingency attached to this. And I believe we also included a, a small inflation also to help account for some of that. But this is the, this is the last slide. The next slide kind of bounces it back to Greg and asks if you guys have any additional questions.
Next slide, please. So again, the next steps after this, as we talked about, we had the, we have the briefing as, for individual consideration, as we, we talked about. And so I'll be presenting just a quick summary of, of what Molly and Tom have talked about. Commissioner's Court approval is the seventh call. As Commissioner Price said, that's scheduled for 15 December. We're looking at, again, if this is, you know, when the seventh call goes through, the engineering design would start approximately July of, of next year. We anticipate about a year of design and then, which has us doing construction in July of 2022, and an approximately 18 months of construction, which puts project completion in the December 2023. Next slide. So there any other questions? And again, we'll be bringing up this briefing in a, in a, in a bridge form as, as part of the actual council meeting as Agenda Item 5A. Thank you, Mayor Potem McNabb Burnett. I, I guess it's back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ramey. Appreciate your time and presentation and stuff, which leads us, I guess, and seeing no questions, it leads us into interim City Manager Paul Fredrickson to discuss the city calendar.
Yeah, Mayor Potem McNabb Burnett, member of the city council. Just to real quickly go over the city council calendar. Just as a reminder, you've got a number of items just this week. The zoning ordinance update, virtual town hall, this Thursday the 19th. You have a executive session, council meeting on the 20th. And then obviously, 21st, we have the virtual town hall for the council candidates on the 21st, this Saturday. And then I just, I wanted to point one other thing out. If you go to the council calendar for December, we still have scheduled a joint meeting with the city council and the DCEDC for the 14th. Just wanted to make you aware of that. I wanted to see if there's any other questions as relates to the council calendar. Oh, and one other reminder, going back for the December 5th meeting, or I'm sorry, December 5th is the tree lighting that we have, virtual tree lighting. So any council members that want to participate, please let us know and we'll work you with, work the schedule around the council participation. Mayor Potem, that's it for my report on the calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. Fredrickson. It, it is time to close this briefing session at 8:27 PM. And we will move right back into regular session and convene there. And I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I will call it at 8:28. And we, please do our invocation. And, and I would ask Councilmember Harvey, if he would please lead us in the invocation.
Okay, can I be heard?
You're good.
All right, thank you very much. Shall we pray? Dear God, our heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this opportunity to come and serve you by serving this community of Duncanville. We pray that you would grant us the mind of Christ, who served you even up to the point of giving his life for us. So we pray, dear God, that you would lead, guide, and direct our thoughts. We pray that we might focus on doing all things in this meeting decently and in order. And we pray that all that is said and done might accomplish your heart's desire for the betterment of this community. For this, we ask, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, and for his sake, we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And now for our pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one indivisible. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Okay, now if we move on to our reports. The mayor's not here, so we'll do that, but council member reports. Mr. Cooks?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor Potem. Hey, I just wanted to, I moved up my meet, connect, and learn this month. Actually, I had it last Saturday from 10 to 11. Had great participation. The topic were the role of a city manager. Had a great discussion and what, what, what citizens would like to see on their next city management. So we had a great discussion. And so thank you for all those that attended, whether you were Zoom or Facebook, or live on Facebook. We do host that every fourth Saturday of the month by Zoom. Always, always learning or giving, giving additional information for our city. Secondly, we will not have one for the month of December because of the holiday. But we will host in our, in the District Four a Christmas slash holiday lighting opportunity for those that live in District Four. We have some keep Duncanville beautiful members in District Four that will drive around and just look at beautiful lights and perhaps identify a couple of homes that has, that got creative or just had lights up. And we're going to reward them by putting a little sign in their yard by saying, "Congratulations for having lights up this year." I want to also thank Todd Segal, who was also, who was our HR director. He also attended the meet, connect, and learn. And actually, combined with me, hosted that. Did an extremely great job. So I want to thank Todd for doing that. And thank you very much for Paul, for allowing you to help with the presentation and allowing Todd to get that done. So thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooks. Any, Mr. Vera Cruz?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. McNabb Burnett there. Hey, I just wanted to inform everybody that last night, the Duncanville ISD got one of their new members, elected members, Dr. Ivory, who took her seat last night and took the place of Ms. Renee McNeely. And I just want to say, congratulations to her. And we pray for her and her well-being there. And then, of course, thank Mrs. McNeely for all her service and time and dedication that she put into the school system. So that's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you, any others?
I didn't, Mayor Potem, I did not say that way to go Duncanville Panthers for whipping up, I'm sorry, beating, I'm sorry, winning for Cedar Hills. So congratulations to our Duncanville Panthers.
Thank you, Councilman Cooks. That was, that takes a check mark off of my list. Just a reminder to the citizens, and you've, and you've heard this before too, is that we are having virtual town halls this week. Thursday will be on the zoning updates. And then Saturday will be the city manager finalist interviews and, and stuff. So if you're interested, please go to the city website and register to do that. And also, I want to remind our citizens, it is that time again where, where we're doing the winter averaging related towards your water and sewer rates. So, so please keep that in mind in terms of what you're doing. And that would conclude the reports. We'll move down now to proclamations. And I will read the first proclamation, and it is regarding Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Na- Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, provide food for human consumption, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of youth and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Duncanville has earned the rank of Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for 18 consecutive years. Now, therefore, on the behalf of our mayor, Barry O. Gordon, city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 7th, 2020, as Arbor Day. In the city of Duncanville, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Next up, we will have a proclamation done by Councilman Cooks regarding Small Business Saturday.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Small Business Saturday, whereas small business is a cornerstone of our free enterprise system. And since the birth of the country and our represented opportunity, independence, and the fulfillment of dreams for generations of Americans. And whereas small business owners who work long hours judging family, career, responsibility, and serving us as a community volunteer are integral to our country prosperity and to vibrants of our community, these entrepreneurs are fundamental to our, to our economy. Through the opportunity offered by the men and women who own and operate small businesses, many of our citizens are able to pursue their dream of a better life. And whereas to recognize Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November 28th, a day to celebrate and to support businesses that creates jobs, boosts economies, neighborhoods in our community, and to encourage shop local. And whereas the city of Duncanville wishes to recognize small businesses for the important role that they play in keeping our local economy strong. Now, therefore, Barry O. Gordon, mayor of city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday. In the city of Duncanville, and urge all citizens to join us with the observances as we celebrate and accomplish small business owners and their employees and encourage the development of new small business. Thank you very much, shop local.
Thank you, Councilman Cooks. And the last proclamation today, Councilmember Vera Cruz in recognition of the DISD Education Foundation Week.
Yes, sir, thank you. Duncanville Independent School District Education Foundation Week. Duncanville Independent District Education Foundation has supported our locals, district administrators, our teachers, and our students for nearly a quarter of a century. And whereas we have a superintendent of our school district who is recognized for his outstanding leadership, administrators of the highest quality, teachers who always bring out the best in their students, students who consistently perform at the highest levels and make us very proud, and a curriculum that prepares students for success after graduation in employment, further education in trade school, junior college, or a four-year college. Our students excel in sports, music, song, academics, creative arts, technology, and so much more. And whereas the current global pandemic has impacted our school district in unprecedented ways, causing schools to close early, our students necessitating our teachers to educate in the challenging manner, utilizing new and innovative techniques. And whereas the mission of the Duncanville ISD Education Foundation is to support the school district and our students. The applaud efforts to assist the school district in the goal of supplying every student with internet access at home, school-supplied hotspots, along with Chromebook, laptop, or iPad so that every student can receive appropriate academic instruction, even if not available to physically attend school. Now, therefore, our mayor, Barry Gordon, mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week, quote, "of November 30th through December 6th, as DISD Education Foundation Week. In the city of Duncanville, we endorse your efforts to support our school district, its leadership, teachers, and our great students." Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving to item number three, citizens' input. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues, not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda issues may be referred to the city staff for the research and for any future action. All persons addressing are subject to the council-adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. We, we do have two comments today. And city secretary, I don't, I don't think will need it, but, but it is a time limit of two minutes. But I will go ahead and read the comments. From Patricia Ebert at one one five South Greenstone Lane, regarding agenda item five A. I vote we wait until twenty twenty-one Seventh Call Projects so that the new city manager can ensure the Main Street Corridor Study's viability. I can see multiple issues in this main Camp Wisdom project. Per the background information prior to November sixth, twenty eighteen bond election that included one point five million for main Camp Wisdom. Did city during due diligence talk to BNSF about the right of way? On October eighteenth, twenty nineteen, city noted that they nominated main slash Camp Wisdom for the Seventh Call Project, even though city had no opportunity to evaluate Camp Wisdom intersection, receive feedback from railroad. December twenty nineteen, city announced BNSF would not support the use of the right of way. Four months later, February thirteenth, twenty twenty, Dallas County staff told city staff main Camp Wisdom was not feasible for the Seventh Call Project. Four months later, at June ninth, twenty twenty budget meeting, city staff told city council about BNSF issues with bond item main Camp Wisdom. Five months later, the November seventeenth city council meeting is to vote on the Seventh Call Project to beat the looming December Dallas City Council deadline. The city can wait till twenty twenty-one Seventh Calls to get this project right. The second item we have here is from Missy Bane. And she writes, not long ago, we closed lanes of traffic to slow traffic down on Main Street in an effort to entice more people to patronize our businesses. Now we're considering a roundabout to help ease traffic on Main Street and improve walkability. The bond that the citizens approved was one that proposed improvements to the intersection of Camp Wisdom and Main. I presumed we would have worked out the easement restrictions with the railroad prior to proposing a specific bond project. A roundabout is a project with a great impact. It is vastly different from what people are accustomed to. Most citizens are not aware that this is being considered. While I understand that there are time constraints on funding from Dallas, I believe a project with such impact on our city should have further citizen insight. Have we considered how this will affect first responders that frequently use Main Street? How will this affect pedestrians? When will there no longer be signal protection for crossing? How many trees will we lose as a result of the project? How long will the project take? And will this negatively affect businesses and construction? And that concludes our citizens' comments. Item number four, the consent agenda. The following action may be acted upon in one motion. A city council member may request items being removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration. City Secretary, would you please read the consent items?
For A, consider the minutes for the August eighteenth, September first, and September fifteenth city council regular meetings. For B, consider a resolution canvassing and declaring the results of the November third, twenty twenty general election for council member District Two for a two-year term, providing for runoff election for Tuesday, December eighth, twenty twenty. For C, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of traffic operations equipment and supplies for Paradigm Traffic Systems using Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Number six zero three dash two zero in the amount of ninety thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. For D, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of traffic operations equipment, maintenance, and supplies from Consolidated Traffic Control, Inc., using the Houston Galveston Area Council of Governments Cooperative Contract Number PE dash zero five dash one nine in the amount of ninety-six thousand six hundred dollars. For E, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Sam's Packs Five Star Board through the local government purchasing cooperative contract number six zero one dash one nine and the expenditure amount of ninety-seven thousand ninety-two dollars and fifteen cents. For F, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of Gateway Monument Agreement with the State of Texas Department of Transportation to allow the city to construct and maintain proposed Gateway monuments within Tech stock right of way along the US Highway sixty-seven corridor from East Side Cockrell Hill Road to Wintergreen Road. For G, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchase of Secure Plan Services from Knight Security Systems LLC using the Texas Department of Information Resources Contract DIR dash CPO dash four four nine four in the amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-six cents. For H, consider a resolution approving and adopting the City of Duncanville investment policy.
Okay, thank you, City Secretary. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Heard Councilmember Harvey made the motion to approve. Do I have a second? Mark Cooks is, is second?
Yes, second.
Councilmember Veracruz, for or against? Mayor Pro Tim McNabb Burnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against? Councilmember Jamison, for or against? At large, Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
Or.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item five, items for individual consideration. Consider a resolution approving the Main Street Corridor Study recommendations for each segment option of Main Street from I twenty to Nance Street and selecting a project is the city's nomination for the Dallas County Seventh Call for Projects. Public Works Director Ramey will present this item.
Again, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim McNabb Burnett and City Council. Again, I'm Greg Ramey. What we'll be doing is a abbreviated summary of the Main Street Corridor Study that we reviewed at the briefing session. Let me, next slide, please. So as stated during the briefing session, the, the, this whole effort started when the bond was voted for in November of twenty eighteen. We've had a process of getting the project specific agreement with Dallas County to partner on the corridor study, again, from I twenty to Center Street, with some recommendations for corridor improvements throughout, all from I twenty all the way south at the time to center, and looking at particular intersections. As mentioned before, when we did the in-progress review in December and analyzed the recommendations against the county's Seventh Call criteria, it appeared that the best location had shifted. Next slide. That was reinforced in February when we briefed the Dallas County Director of Public Works. In June, again, we briefed council on the Seventh Call or the, where we were at on the Dallas, the Main Street Corridor Study with Dallas County and the potential impacts on the Seventh Call Project. And then, as we talked about, we just briefed the full corridor study to council on, at the briefing session. Next slide, please. So again, here are the goals of the Main Street Corridor Study. Again, they have linkages to the county Seventh Call goals as briefed previously. But to summarize, it was increasing traffic efficiency, increasing pedestrian mobility, providing connectivity to potential commuter rail stations, encouraging economic vitality, and again, through the analysis of all the sections, identify the best project for the Dallas Seventh Call based on their evaluation criteria. And again, note the key at the bottom. We are, each of the sections was evaluated on its positive impact, neutral impact, or negative impact against the four goals that I just talked about. Next slide, please. So again, the project scope started at I twenty, which is, the north is on the right side of the map and continued south all the way to Nance Street. Originally, the project ended at center, but after we started the corridor study, we determined that Nance Street was the more logical endpoint for the corridor study. And you can see the six segments highlighted on the map. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to run through a summary of the six options. I've got three on this page and we'll have the other three on the next page. So again, option one, Main Street from I twenty down to Camp Wisdom Road. The recommendation was to maintain the four lanes of traffic. But at the time of reconstruction, actually shift, when we rebuild the road, shift it to the west, to the very edge of the city right of way, so that we can widen the sidewalk on the east side of the road in that location from approximately four to five feet out to ten feet as a hike and bike trail. And again, this, this work would be tied to a reconstruction project triggered by pavement deterioration or subsurface utility deterioration. And then that would trigger the overall replacement and implementation of this design. What you'll see at the bottom for all of these is the estimated costs as well as the score that the county graded it as. In this case, option one was estimated at seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars and received the county score of fifty-eight. And option two, we looked at multiple alternatives for option two that would help us get around the constraints of, of the railroad. And after we analyzed all of those alternatives, the one that was the best alternative for this location is the one that you see here, which is just a easing of the slope of the grade to the east and to the north and to the south with some minor pedestrian crossings over the railroad and a hike and bike trail heading down the east side. But the, the study also recommends conducting a Camp Wisdom Road Corridor study before finalizing this design since the corridor, Camp Wisdom is, is an arterial road with, with lots of traffic. The, the recommend, this design here was estimated at two point six million dollars and had a county score of sixty-five. Option three, which was Main Street from Camp Wisdom Road to Davis Street, contemplated reducing that, that segment of road from five or, or four lanes down to three lanes. Interim solution of converting a lane to a hike and bike lane with a separation with paint and delineators, and then a final solution of three lanes of traffic with a buffer and then a ten-foot hike bike lane. The interim solution was estimated at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and the final solution was estimated at two point two million dollars. And this was rated ranked by the county at fifty-five point five. Next slide, please. Option four, which was the intersection of Main Street, just contemplated working within the existing pavement along Davis Street, just restriping it to get us some more sidewalk width within the existing, again, the existing footprint in order to improve pedestrian mobility from west of, west of the railroads to get, help get them to and from Main Street. The estimate for that was forty-five thousand dollars and the county score was sixty-one. Option five was Main Street from Davis Street to Center. And what we contemplated there was keeping the three lanes of traffic of that existing there, but using the, some of the pull-in parking, converting it to parallel parking and then using that extra space to put in a hike and bike lane alongside the Main Street, which still allows pedestrian foot traffic along the storefronts. The cost for that was estimated three hundred and fifty-six thousand and had a county score of fifty-six. And finally, option six was the intersection at Main Street and Center Street, Main Street from Senator Street to Nance Street, and then Nance Street from Main Street to Santa Fe Trail. We talked about that was basically turning Center at Main into a roundabout, putting in a new signalized intersection down at Center at Nance and improving that intersection at Center and Nance and, and then improving the pavement condition to facilitate a new drive corridor along Nance for traffic that goes to and from Santa Fe Trail. That cost was estimated at three point one million and had a county score of seventy-seven point five. The next slide, please. And again, this, this slide here is just a summary of, again, the different segments, how they ranked against the study criteria, as well as how they scored under the Seventh Call criteria. So as you see along the left, the segments are numbered one through six. And again, we analyze number two, segment number two, the alternative to, which had the minimum impact to the BNSF right of way. The bottom line is, is based on the study analysis, Nance to Center was the only segment that achieved positive impacts for all four of the goals. When you look over to the Seventh Call criteria that you see across the top, this is what was performed by the county. Only Nance to Center scored above seventy, scored a seventy-seven point five. And seventy was the minimum score for a project in order for it to receive consideration as a Seventh Call for Project with partnership with the county. As mentioned previously, the plan for Main Street all along was to find a project that would enable us to partner with Dallas County so that the million, million and a half dollars that we allocated of bond money for Main Street would be, would find a match with Dallas County. Next slide, please. So again, the next steps, the way the, the resolution is written right now, it's to receive council approval of the recommendations for each of the segment options for all six segments, as well as to receive a council selection for the Dallas County Seventh Call for Projects. In December fifteen of twenty twenty is when the Seventh Call for Projects goes to Dallas County Commissioners Court for final, for final selection. We estimate engineering design starting in July of twenty twenty-one, beginning construction in July of twenty twenty-two, and then completing the project in December twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please. So I'm, I've provided just some text to help, help you all with here, but basically what we're asking on this slide is that you make a motion to approve the corridor study recommendations for each segment of Main Street from I twenty to Nance, and then make a selection of one of the option six. The six options presented here as the city's nomination for the Dallas County Seventh Call for Projects. Are there any questions for me?
Greg, this is Bob. There was three alternates under option six. So is it all three alternates for option six or just alternate three?
I'm sorry. There are no. There are no alternates for option six. That is describing the segment, which actually goes from the intersection at Main, at Center Street, down to Main, down that Main Street Corridor to the intersection at Nance and Main Street, and then to the west, west of Santa Fe Trail. So it's, can you go up to slide seven, please? So the, the way it's written is the selection of option six is basically what you're seeing here. It's the intersection at Main, at Main Street and Center Street, and then Main Street from Center Street to Nance Street, and then Nance Street from Main Street west over to Santa Fe Trail. And so this whole, that whole segment is, those, you know, that, that's what comprises segment option six.
And, but there was alternates one, two, and three that Molly had in her presentation.
Those were alternates that, that we analyzed and then worked our work through to, in order to get to the solution here.
Okay, does, does, if, if a council member makes a motion for option six, should they select the one, two, or three alternate? So it's specific.
Oh, oh, oh. I see what you're saying. Let me go back to, we looked that up. So what that would be is alternative three as briefed at the briefing session, which was the one that had the roundabout at Center and Main, and a new traffic signal at Nance and Main. The work between those two intersections and, and some of the approaches.
Yes, okay, thank you. So if Mayor Pro Tem, if, if council's of mind, or someone wants to make a motion for option six, then they would have to select alternates one, two, or three along with that option. We will fill that in if that, or whatever the options are. And I just wanted to bring that up, since there was three alternates. Always like to make sure we are within the expectations of council when they make a selection like this, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you go back to 10?
I'll, I'll help if need be, but I just wanted to make that point as we head into this portion of the meeting.
Can we please go to slide 10? And are there any questions for me from, from council?
Yes. I think we talked about that earlier, and all these other segments don't have to be voted on right now. The only one that has to be voted on is segment six for the 1.5 match from Dallas County. All of these others going down, my understanding is that, that, you know, they may or may not be something that we want to do, because I think some of us certainly would like to continue to try to work on Camp Wisdom at Main. Instead of all of these other.
So maybe, Bob, maybe you can help me. Right now, the way it's resolved, I guess we could split it.
If you're considering your resolution approving the corridor study, that we'll agree that approving that those are five, you got six options. What you're really, what the resolution is fixed on is what call for projects is. So if you accept the study, you can make a motion to accept the study that those are your six options. And then the only thing that needs to be done tonight would be to fill in options, one of the six options for a call for projects to the county. So all you're talking about doing is saying this, we accept the study as to all six options, but the resolution itself is merely letting out one of those options for a call for projects. And then, of course, you would have to discuss the one you don't select tonight. If you do select one of the six, the other five would be subject to further, further input from the council.
With, with that said, I'm ready to make a motion. Do I, let me, me back up and say, I do, I do accept the county's grading system, but I more so accept the responsibility that the citizen has put upon us to make a decision based upon what we, what we have in front of us. So therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Main Street Corridor Study recommendation for each segment of Main Street, from I-20 to Nance Street, and to select it, and street, and select the project at segment option six with alternative three as the city nominates to the Dallas County Seventh Call for Project.
Okay, wait a minute, that wasn't clear at all.
Well, I just read, I just read.
Are you saying?
I just read what was on the screen.
Yeah, Bob, Bob, are you, yeah, but that's what Rayme wanted. Bob, are you saying, can you say it more clearly? Because they made the study, but the one that we're voting on is six. You know, I would want to do a whole lot more about moving a street over five feet and spending that kind of money. That's, I mean, that needs some discussion.
Okay. The. My motion is out there, and I'll, I'll revise the motion, Bob, to say to approve the Main Street Corridor Study recommendation for each segment of Main Street from Nance to, from Nance Street, and select project segment option number six with alternative number three, as the city nomination to the Dallas County. I didn't change anything other than saying segments, option six is the one I'm selecting, making the motion for.
So Councilmember Cooks has made the motion. Do I have a second?
But that, that segment six is the one that we're voting on?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Councilmember Cooks has made the motion. Do I have a second?
I want to second it, but I'm not sure. What, Rayme, what are you, Greg, what are you asking us to do? What was your recommendation again? Your recommendation is to, to approve all of them and six with the, with the roundabout. Is that, is that right?
The way, the way I, I proposed it was, yes, there was two things. One was, does council like what we're proposing all, for all six sections? And then, as a separate part, saying, and of all these six sections, section X is the one that we want to partner with the county on, with the rest of them being implied that we would fund it, you know, as the budget allows.
Okay.
And never come back to you.
That's what I, that's what I would like to do, but I'm trying to make sure I do the right.
Okay, so.
Is that what you said, Mark? I mean, I'm not sure.
But I think what I'm hearing is that you'd like me to read all the, to accept all of the segment options, one through six? And if that, is that, Greg, Bob?
No.
So, Bob, would you go ahead and just help us out here?
Yeah, make them, yeah, make.
The way the agenda item is posed, it says to accept the Main Street Corridor Study recommendations for each segment. So you would approve the design for all six options. And then, and it says, and selecting a project for the Seventh Call. So if you approve the agenda item as written and posted, you would accept all six segments as your corridor study for improvements on Main Street. And then if, what you've also done is select option six, alternate three for submission to the Dallas County Commissioners Court for a call for projects number seven. You can obviously split that if you desire to select one of the six options for your call for project to the Dallas County Commissioners Court. And then you could table option, whatever one you don't select, or go ahead and approve it. What I understood Mr. Cook's motion to be was to select option six, alternate three for the call for projects. That was the motion that I think that he.
That's what I understood.
And that left whatever you don't select for inclusion for further discussion, debate, or tabling.
I think we should table the other ones, because number one, we didn't really even go into, and that's the one that was moving the street five feet. Please. And we need to talk about that. We need to talk about it, Greg.
It's a study.
That would be one that we would do only way in the future when we were going to rip up.
I understand.
So, yes, ma'am.
I understand, but you want us to go, go ahead and okay it now, and I don't want to do that.
Oh, yes, I understand, ma'am.
I, I think one thing to bear in mind, council, is that these are all subject to funding as well. So this is just a guidance item. If we want to table the other options or accept a table, however, we're really, I think the issue here is the Seventh Call Projects recommendation using funds that we have available.
And that was the intent of the motion. Again, I'm willing to, I'm willing to move the motion to, to get it, to get the, the second and approve. If I need to read all of the segment options, or I could just say the, I like to approve the motion that's written and selecting option six with alternative three in addition to the motion.
And I would second that, if you read it that way, I would second that.
Okay, I just read.
That's right, so city attorney.
I, I, what I understand that to mean, Mayor, the motion is to approve option six, alternate three, being the Main Street, Center Street, Main Street, Center to Nance, roundabout for inclusion in the Dallas County Call for Projects number seven.
That's not what I thought I was seconding.
Yeah. I mean, what, what Mr., what Councilmember Cooks was, was basically reading exactly what we have on our screen right now, and he's including options one through six, and then he's adding seg, segment six, option alternate three.
And that's, and that's what I thought I was seconding, seconding what you just said, Mayor Pro Tem.
So.
Okay.
Oh, Bob, I'm.
Mayor, as you've restated the motion, that's the motion that's on the floor. You're the chair.
Okay, thank you. So we have a, a motion from Councilmember Cooks, and we have a second from Monty Anderson.
Correct, sir.
So it's, it's time to vote.
All right, Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tem McNabb Burnett, for or against?
And I, I'm going to vote against, because I really think the mayor needs to be here as well.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against?
Against.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
Against.
Okay, the motion does not pass. Is, is there another motion?
Mayor, I move that we table this particular item until, till our next meeting so that our neighbors can understand what it is that, that we are being asked to do and have an opportunity to provide input to us as their opinions as to what we should do.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Harvey's made the motion to table. Councilmember Jamison has seconded. Please vote.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tem McNabb Burnett, for or against?
For.
Anderson, for or against?
Against.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
Against.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Motion passes, table it for two votes.
Mayor, for the, oops. Mayor, for the record, I, just so that we understand that it's been, and I think that, to make sure it's tabled until December 1st, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, just, Madam Secretary, if you would reflect that in the record, thank you.
Will do.
Thank you, city attorney. With that said, item 5B, take any action necessary as a result of the executive session. Executive session was not held. Item six is staff and board reports. We have the monthly financial report as of September 30th, 2020, preliminary. Item B is receive the library quarterly report. Item C is receive the parks and recreation quarterly report. And D is receive the fieldhouse quarterly report. Councilmembers, I think you've had time to review it. Does anybody have any questions regarding the reports or comments? Hearing none, seeing none. We will move on. Thank you, staff, for submitting your reports. And we will move that this meeting is, is done, and we will call this meeting adjourned at 9:17 PM. Thank you, council.